Okay, welcome to the
Yeah, sorry.
Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, January 16, 2018. And first thing on our agenda, we used to have two clocks though.
Who's interior designer?
They're dropping like flies. They're supposed to be like the solar clocks, so don't worry, you have to like, you don't have to touch them. And the next thing you know, like you're watching, it's like three in the morning or.
Yes, we changed the battery and we're supposed to, I'm gonna have to reset. It wasn't resetting, they have to face it towards Colorado. I'm not kidding, it says that because that's where it comes from.
Yeah, you have to face it in a certain direction, forget it.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm only five, I'm only five seven, I can't.
You're good, that's true.
No, that's perfect.
We are hoping it would
Okay.
We'll be ready by now.
The first thing is the Home Rule. It's request for legislation to allow advertising on park fencing.
Right, so originally, we thought that we would have to pass a local law and council researched it and determined that we actually just need a resolution. So this would allow us to be able to advertise on our brick-built fences. Right, and get sponsorships.
Right. That's true.
Um, so this is the resolution. Any questions?
I think there's a lot of money, I'm sort of curious, do we think there's a lot of money in that?
I don't think, I don't know.
Well, lots are relative terms, but I think there's certainly people who would advertise on the ads.
No, I have no doubt that there's people who would love to advertise on our rec.
Same question, would we decide later what we're charging, et cetera?
Sure.
Yeah, this whole goes with.
Yeah, this is just to allow.
This is just to allow, ask them to give us a Home Rule. And it's limited to nonprofits.
That's right.
Is that what I heard?
No, no, it wouldn't be limited.
Anybody.
Well, I mean, you, I suppose, yeah, I'm not sure if you could limit it, I'm not sure if you'd want to.
Oh, yeah.
But the idea was they would be open to all.
And do we have a mechanism to be able to monitor and approve what the advertisements are, so the content, the color, any of that?
Well, you could, you could delegate that to the recommission, that would be something that they might wanna.
But we don't have to write that into the resolution, though.
No.
Not this one, but later on, when we're talking about fees and what we want to do, right, like who to accept.
And just, no, on Viagra.
One more question, recommission actually is awareness and there's, are they in favor of it? Do you want like political ads?
Right.
Another thing we could do, I mean, the recommission can decide is that you could tie it into sponsorships. So for example, the team, if some, a business sponsors a team, it could be a higher level of sponsorship to get a banner as well. Whatever, because there's gonna be definitely interest because we get a ton of businesses sponsor teams.
That's a great idea.
Okay, great. Okay, so that'll be on the next meeting. Uh, the next one was the resolution regarding the limitations on the salt deductions. So councils, Ed specifically.
Uh, right, so we draft, I draft, I drafted this. I left space on the second page. In terms of its circulation, I was gonna get the board's input on that, but the idea, idea is that the state really is in the best position to try to deal with this issue. There was an announcement today, I think from the governor's office, that it continued to look hard at solutions. But on the local level, our options are very limited, really, there are no options, no good ones. I think tomorrow, that article said that tomorrow there will come out something, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, please, we'll marry report tomorrow, but there was no further clarity in the budget announcement today.
Let's see.
So in terms of circulation, did the board?
I thought the resolution looked good, but I, I think Ivy had a good salute, good suggestion also, which was maybe in comments about the some of the proposals in the state of the, state of the state.
I mean, it could be a both and, I mean, I think the, the recommendation I was making was more to sort of write a memo as opposed to pass the resolution.
I just sort of, I don't know.
Um, but we could certainly do both of those if, if a resolution is of interest, you know, to sort of show our constituents that we're doing something.
What was?
Right.
Right.
What were we gonna do with this resolution?
Circulate, um, to whomever the board thought would be appropriate.
I kinda like the idea of passing the resolution, which I think we have to, but writing a letter and we can attach the resolution if we want to.
Absolutely. A resolution is a resolution, it's not binding on anybody, it's.
Writing a memo.
Yeah.
Right.
So the governor, our state representatives?
Our state representatives.
Murphy, Buckhold.
Maybe like the chairs of like the taxation committee or something like that, I don't know what the committees are.
It would be real property committee, would that be, that would be Sandy Galiff? You can, huh? In the, in the assembly?
So is O Y distribution?
I think so. Department of Tax and Finance.
Sorry, this is my, all my calls from my regular phone are being forwarded to my voicemail for some, my, my cell phone for some reason. I'm trying to figure it out.
All right, so we'll put a, a list together, revise the resolution, it'll be on next week's agenda for adoption.
So, so what are you gonna do? You're gonna?
Well, we'll fill out the, on the second page, we left space for, it should be distributed through
Okay.
After it's adopted, it'll go out with a cover letter to all those people. We did address, what I heard, what I heard today was
Why don't you shut it off?
The charitable production and all your payroll tax change, so those are the two that I'm aware of, that were announcements today.
It's that little button on the side, I'm always hitting it.
If there are others, I can build into the resolution as examples of other initiatives that are being looked at, but those are the two that I'm aware of.
And do we wanna put into the resolution, like, do we wanna respectfully request that we get regular updates from folks on this, or?
It's a good idea.
And I just had one other question, which is, and we reached out and actually spoke with Buckhold and Murphy to find out if there anything specific that we can put in that would help, something that, because I know David's been working hard on this, I've heard less from Terrence Murphy, but anything specific we can put in there to bolster any kind of piece of legislation that they're advocating for?
A specific request in the resolution?
Well, I don't know, there, I mean, they've obviously done a lot more work on this and it's closer to what's going on, you know, at the state level.
Are you, are you asking for, not?
Well, to reach out to them and.
Right, I understand that.
Well, I, we, I, we have.
You're looking for specific wording that they would use in the legislation that we would address.
Yeah, that, right, exactly. To echo, yeah, to make it more effective as a tool, because I'm assuming every town is doing something like this, or every town south of, you know, eighty-four.
Well.
I, I think, I, you know, not to sound like a downer, I think the, the value of this is frankly limited, they all know with their constituents specifically that they want reform, period. I mean, so I mean, this is, is just a, what's word of symbolic, you know, I, I don't think it's lost on any legislator, especially the governor, I shouldn't say especially, any legislator that we wanna minimize the impact of salt deduction losses, but I'm happy to put whatever language anyone wants to hear.
I just wonder, like, and, and I don't know, this is like a neophyte question, like, how would this be perceived? So like, I mean, I'd very much like to do something that seems like, you know, we wanna work with you and we wanna, you know, su- support your efforts to help us on the local level by advocating for whatever policy changes need to happen. And so like, I would like that to be, this to be perceived that way, not as a, you know, hey, you guys aren't doing enough and we locally wanna push you to do more because we, we're not happy, you know what I'm saying, like, so we.
That's probably put in a letter.
Yeah.
I think a letter could maybe put specific ideas that you have as opposed to this, which is more generic.
Right.
A letter can identify, I think, would you consider A, B, and C, whatever.
And I also.
We can wait for the governor's suggestions as well.
And one of, and one of the reasons I wanted to just reach out to them is because if they're sort of moving stuff forward and they need to like give demonstration of proof that this, their ideas have merit, you know, having something concrete that they could attach and that would be repeated would, would help them in their effort.
Well, Murphy's office is supposed to send me a letter that they wrote on the issue, they haven't sent it yet. And Buckwald, we've seen all his emails on the, on the issue, but I, I personally think we just wait till tomorrow to see what comes out of the governor's office, and then if we do cite specific examples, it is probably better.
I'm not opposed to that.
So, this isn't going in very, so we, we will hold it.
Right, so, so that's, that's fine.
And, yeah. Um.
So it's a good start, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, um, and I did wanna mention to the board that I heard from Congresswoman Lowey's office on Thursday, who was calling to find out whether or not, what kind of impact it was having on our community. So I told her how we had something like twenty to twenty-five percent of our residents come in. We had fourteen hundred residents come in over the course of three days to take and prepay twenty eighteen town taxes, county taxes, and
So, so as a follow-up to that, while we may not know what people's exact mortgages are, we do know who pays more than ten thousand dollars in taxes. And I was wondering if Josh could just give us a distribution of parcels by, you know, under ten, ten to twenty, twenty to
Gotcha.
You know what I'm saying, so we can actually do it, so we can say to NIDA that ninety-five percent of Newcastle residents are impacted by this?
We know local taxes, we don't necessarily know what people are paying in state taxes.
Well, a hundred percent is because.
No, but it's, it's more like, we know.
Well, property, well, property taxes.
We know what they're paying, yeah.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent is being impacted because home values are going to be downgraded across the board.
We will know. Believe me, I know.
So whether or not you are paying less than ten thousand, it's gonna trickle, it'll ever trickle down.
Well, we can say that, that's fair enough, we can definitely say that, but I think the fact that anybody's paying ten thousand in their school, county, town, special district, taxes.
Would you really need for him to do a run, or you just wanna have?
He can, he probably has, I think he should.
I guess that's almost everybody.
Well, I don't think it is almost everybody, because I think some of the condos are not paying.
Well, some of the condos maybe.
Condos, and I don't really know how many condo units we actually.
Six hundred and fifty, somewhere between.
Okay. I don't even know how many of those are, so, but I just think it would be a good statistic to throw out and, and have it handy.
Yeah, and he has everything in that.
I mean, I know that we've seen the Westchester County numbers for property taxes, and it's like seventy-five percent of Westchester County or seventy-three percent, so.
Well, would be a good stat to put in the, in the resolution, basically, it's impacting twenty percent of our residents, whatever.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Yep, next. Ah, okay, the product, the prior, prioritization of the implementation of goals and actions in a conflict.
Should we just cut, cut, we do next, I know Jennifer's here for the clean energy grant.
I know, but I'll.
We know, we need somebody else, we need a, so right now, okay, forget that, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Well, Sabrina, and I think, yeah. So, yeah, I was just gonna try to do a couple things, is that okay? Could you hang a little bit? Okay, sorry. So, yeah, I was just trying to get through a couple things that, yeah. Um, okay.
You guys are able to know what's George?
Um.
And the hydrants, hydrants.
Is that on each end? I don't think we talked about that.
No, 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 it's the RFP to go out for the hydraulic analysis is on there, you know. Right, no, the, not the RFP, the Request for Engineering Services.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yes. Okay, so in your packet is the memo, and here we have IDs in here as well.
I don't know if I saw it. I think this, I think this is the chart that I did.
That's, that's your chart, that's yours.
But there was also Robinson an email?
It's all in here.
It's all in here?
Yeah, everybody's emails, only IDs aren't.
On before.
And so, forgive me, I did a really rudimentary, oh, there you go, sort of.
Slow matrix.
No, it's, it certainly is not.
This is just all of ours collectively, and so we catch up on it?
Yes. It isn't all of yours, it is most of ours, and where we had Tommy Brown.
Oh, we didn't put Adams here.
No, I did not put Adams.
Yeah, but he was the, it's current town board.
He concurred, he concurred with yours for most of it.
Yeah, I think he did, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
But just for.
Well, there was, there was a lot of, of nexus in our, in our.
It, it actually was, was surprising, and if you take a look at the, um, two on the bottom if you take a look at the ones on the bottom, the two on the bottom, that also have to do with enhancing bike, pedestrian, and alternative transport, and also road safety analysis with pedestrian safety, these all sort of relate to sidewalks and just, you know, pedestrian um, accessibility in town, whether it be on major routes or just between hamlets or centers within town. So, um, that's something that we had talked about, um, the development department was actually going to take the lead on and start creating a GIS of our current sidewalks in town, um, where the next logical connections would go, whether they were state, county, or local roads. Because depending upon the jurisdiction of the road, of the authority for the road, um, that's where our stumbling blocks are. The state traditionally requires, um, three-foot sidewalks and five-foot snowshells. And they have resisted, in, in the past, they have allowed us to take easements from homeowners. They've now moved away from that and actually want takings. So all major roads to take.
What's that?
Easements just a right of way of taking his ownership.
And you gotta pay him for it, too.
Yeah.
Well, easement, did we pay it for one twenty? I don't think we paid it, but we.
Easements we usually would be paid for, too.
Yeah, you could pay it, but I think with one twenty, they could, we take care of it.
When, we would take care of the sidewalks, which is why we take care of almost all the sidewalks in town.
Shovel it, right. Right.
Um, because that was the price that we paid.
I just have one update, thirteen point one and thirteen point two I also had on my list.
You did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, it goes with me.
Um, I have a, I'm setting, I'm trying to set up a meeting with DOT to discuss that, um, eight-foot and three-foot requirement, to see if they have any flexibility on it. That's that email that we.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Well, basically, the guy, they sent out some, some email about sidewalk, uh, safety initiative or something, and I responded back, you know, would be what, it'd be safer for all of us to have sidewalks in the first place, but the eight-foot and five-foot requirement is not helping us in the taking. And then they forwarded the email to somebody else who said, let's set up a meeting, so that's where we are right now. But they wanted some, um, what did they ask for, just some, some studies or something that we've done on, I don't know what they asked for.
I said on the bridge, but that wasn't the right thing to send up?
No, I don't think so.
What?
I think he wants our historical, I, I think he wants, I think he wants, uh.
Wrong email.
To overcome the, to overcome the burden of.
Well, the, the bridge was for Latimer, which is used for anyway, because that was like the last week he asked Vladimir.
Yeah.
Vladimir?
Latimer.
Oh, I'm serious, I wasn't sure, I was a Vladimir.
But. But, but the, um, the thing about the size, I think what they were looking for is just a history of, of our, um, efforts to get.
Oh, okay, like the one seventeen.
Yeah, the one seventeen, and then how the rule changed in the interim and, you know, what we've done and, you know, what we tried to do.
Yeah, so. Right, so if you take a look at the one-twenty sidewalk that goes from town heading towards Roy Brook School in the enders, it was able to, we were able to keep trees, we went around it, it, it's lovely, it's not right along the road, it actually went in, in a little bit. Um, the state would never approve that again. Um, it needs to be right on the roadway, we need to have five-foot snow shelf.
May I ask why?
Yeah.
I mean, really, I, that's sort of, I mean, I don't mean to be rude, and I completely agree with you, but we've had, no, but we've had lots of conversations, like, you know,
You can.
No, we like it.
But that's what, that, that.
The roundabout was the preferred intersection, over at the intersection of one seventeen and Roy Brook Road, and it had to be a roundabout, and a lot of.
Had to be a roundabout, right, and?
Right, and at, at the end of the day, when push comes to shove, and.
It wasn't a roundabout, right.
If they, they're like, oh, no, we never said that, we couldn't find any documentation, so I kind of feel that if we are going to take that as gospel, because it makes, and my feeling is if there is a better route that is more scenic, that is not on the road, it actually is more fun for the pedestrian.
Of course.
And will get more youth, so I don't see.
Comfort, too.
Of course, yes.
And I do not understand this rule, so if there's any kind of documentation that they have, to sort of outline.
Well, when we, when we set up the meeting, we'll ask for it.
Yeah.
Because that's the issue.
And, and do we have any exceptions to the rule?
That, that's the. I mean.
There, there, there have to be exceptions to it, but yet, when DOT wants it for their purposes, they manage to find flexibility in the rules and regulations.
It's not along the street.
When we ask them, it's.
Well, how can we identify exceptions to the rules or means by which you can?
I'm not aware of it.
Is there a database, or is it lack of insurance, so here you go?
Well, what we have this meeting is to ask them, these are all questions we could ask, we could formulate a list of questions before, we could have two town board members meet with them, and we'll, we'll, we'll get the answers. Because that's the point of this meeting, is to, uh, the truth is that it's DOT, that's their restrictions, or at least what they're telling us are their restrictions, or
Prohibited.
Or, or, or.
And, and, and the, the next question I have is there's DOT-proof sidewalks, and then there is trails. So, sort of creating the same effect, it's just not, I don't believe that, does DOT require, allow a trail along their?
I mean, these are their roads, it's.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about just from a, from an, from a connectivity planning point of view, there may be portions of it that would fall under a DOT by the road sidewalk, and there may be portions of it because of the way the town is laid out, that may not.
So, well, that, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to take a look and, um, investigate whether or not we had ways to bypass state highways and let's say go through town roads, so take people off through one seventeen to get from point A to point B.
The chaplain, that was the chaplain.
Well, the chaplain, but using streets, and just, you know, putting a nice sidewalk on, so people have a good place to walk and.
But seriously, the chaplain is such a better idea, because then you're not on one seventeen, like.
But it still doesn't, I mean, the one seventeen sidewalk is still by the temple over there, I mean, there's still plenty of room for the sidewalks, but I'm just, I agree.
Down there.
Yeah, that.
Right, there's two different areas.
Where you're speaking, you know, once, where, once.
Well, the sidewalk study that they previously did was actually by the temple, up until, up until like the mobile station, and never, they never, I don't think.
That's.
You know about that.
Like south.
Right, and that's, that's where we stumbled, and I, I had that documentation from DOT telling us that they would not accept easements that we had in the takings. And for those village houses that are along the one seventeen.
They were way adjacent to it.
That's, that's just silly, I mean, to have trucks rumbling three feet from your front stoop, it's nuts. Um, and needless to say, you know, the residents weren't very happy about it, nor will we, that's not what we wanted.
So anyways, yeah, so I think it's the exceptions to the rules and if there's other things, I mean, that makes sense, there's a, a high density of people and there's another big project that's going in right there.
Okay, so, um, I don't wanna lose that train of thought, but what I do wanna, um, one of the reasons why we're doing this today is because we're going to be taking a look at the goals and objectives for twenty eighteen, and what I'd like to do is take and fold these uh, goals and action items that the board has, that there's some consensus on, into our goals and objectives for the upcoming year, so that we can make sure that we're that they really should be done together, there's no reason to keep them separate. We have funding for them, um, for studies, and I just, I'd like some clear directions so that when we take in, we present, um, the goals and objectives, which is gonna be like February sixth, right in there, something like that.
Yeah, February sixth.
Um, at that work session, that, you know, I, I have a better idea of what the board would like, so that we're a couple steps ahead.
Can I, I'm sorry, I wanted to take a step back before we go forward.
Sure.
Ed, um, we're talking about a taking, not whether we will or we won't, but what is the law on taking, can you just explain that? What, what would be required, what would have to demonstrate to take property?
Uh, public purpose, it's all laid out in the EDP, there's a procedure for, for doing it, um, you have to obviously pay fair values, getting to that number, again, there's a process.
Terminating.
So. Yeah.
Right, well, that made the word, but I understand the process, so, so we identify a value, identify a public purpose.
A, a value, an amount is offered, I'm not an expert in the area, but an amount is offered, if the property owner wants to challenge that amount, then there's a, a proceeding that can be commenced where that happens.
And that is only from the town government through, to a private property owner?
Correct.
So what about the town government to the school district?
You know, where it's two public entities and one wants to take, I actually have to get back to you with an answer on how that's gonna work.
Because it would seem that that would be a potential solution, for example, on one seventeen, a taking of school property, which could also tie into if you wanted to come that, I'm talking closer to Reader's Digest, but.
On Bob Lewis's side of the street?
Yes, because that also potentially resolved the issue of ugly blind spot curve by whoop-a-wool, you're taking for public good, and then you're giving people foot and access on, on the main road there.
There's not that much space, though.
Well, but the, the taking, the taking mean that you're taking, cutting back and pushing back, thereby also increasing, increasing your line of sight.
There isn't enough for the.
If you could do an easement.
Yeah, we're all on the same page.
No, no, there's enough for the line of sight, I don't know that it's enough to make a meaningful sidewalk.
Well, what, what, what Ed is saying, though, if everybody's on the same page, you don't need a taking, just do an easement. Like, if they have no, you already do the taking if it's.
Right, so, so the school could agree.
If we're gonna, if there's gonna be a wall there, and it's gonna go up on, say, our dime, we'd maintain the wall, and I would hope that the school district would, if we could get on the same page, we'd be fine with that.
Like with the chaplain, when we looked at the chaplain before, the, a lot of it was the school property, they had no problem with it, they were gonna give us the easement. There was, you know, there was no taking involved with that.
So anyway, so one of the things that I brought up beforehand, and I was hoping Sabrina was gonna get back to you, because I thought that was one of the takeaways from the last meeting we had on the topic of priorities for the implementation of the master plan, is I had kind of grouped these things on topics that I thought, like, if you're gonna pay fifty thousand dollars for a study to get answered to question A, you could pay sixty-five thousand dollars and get answers to questions A, B, and C, and get a more complete, um, assessment of what's at stake. And to me, what's happened, so that's why I kind of, because I felt some of these topics could easily be addressed within almost the same budget, if, if the questions were scoped out appropriately in advance.
Right, but that would be for this board to take in.
So I think Sabrina was going to actually come back and let us know if she, if she, which item she felt could be aggregated as part of a single study with minimal impact to the budget.
I, I think also what we need to do is we'll look, look at this chart, we don't need to do it today, but, and, and come up with common areas, I mean, to be honest, you're, like, this chart, no, I know, but this chart, like, strengthen zoning codes, that's and I'm the only one that has it checked off, but the truth is, I think we all agree, I mean, I don't think, what I was trying to do is not really strengthen zoning codes, uh, zoning, uh, zoning codes, it was basically, look at the zoning codes in downtown and try to figure out how to encourage more residential. So, I mean, I think, and I think if it was worded like that, I think there'd be a lot more checkmarks. Now, for some reason, I didn't check off the box where like Hollywood, she says update towns, trail development, master new, I mean, that's the chaplain, I would check off that box. You know, so, when you look at this chart as a whole, I think my X marks would change, you know, when you're looking at, instead of looking at a hundred and fifty goals, but now if I'm looking at eight or nine, I think that's what we should do, is, you know.
See, LBE three point one.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the.
To me, the last three are kind of the same.
I may, I may have checked off the road of heart.
I agree, that's why, yes.
Right, that's why I felt that it could all be part of the same.
Right, right, I mean, I think some of these things, you have to think about them as sequential, too, so, you know, some of these, some of these are actually set, too, when there has to be something
But you don't. Twenty-six, four, twenty-six, seven.
Right.
Before it, right? Um, but then the other thing I wanted to ask Jill is, has there been an analysis done of, when it comes to the, the various initiatives, whether any of them are sort of low-cost or no-cost things, things that are like low-hanging fruit, like, are there, I would hate to think that there's things that don't, we don't get started on, because we, we've decided that these are our priorities, but there are things that are relatively easy to get going, and we could do sort of simultaneous with these.
Right, so, one thing I can think of off the top of my head was, um, the, uh, the changes to the tree ordinance, our tree bank, to take and expand it, so that
It's like.
feed it shrubs and other types of planters.
Right.
Um, that actually we have in the works, and we are looking for some revised legislation.
We discussed that.
Um, that's, I mean, it's the being drafted right now, so that was one of the things. One of the reasons why the sidewalks actually was very appealing to me is because, for a large portion of that, we can take and do the preliminary in-house, and then take and present a, um, a GIS starting point to for the next step, for us to see what types of grants might be available, to see, um, you know, rail trails and things like that, are all things that are grant um, eligible, if we have the basic documentation and studies, and a lot of that we have in-house, so I, I guess to a.
Maybe, so, I just wanna go, can I just, before we go on, I'll let you jump in, in Sabrina's mattress break, she, um, there is actually, uh,
Please.
who's doing, who can do the work, so if it's a staff job, that's like low-hanging staff or council, not, not necessarily policy, so if you filter by that on the, um, thing, but I think you'll get to which ones there, and which ones of those are low-hanging fruit, she then marked the high, medium, and low priority.
That I saw, yeah.
So if you do that plus high, you'll get the ones that have in-house managed and high impact.
I mean, it's, it's a good idea, the, the thing is, I think when this chart was first, when we were asked to do our five priorities, it was also in the context of the budget, because we had to there's certain things require money, and we wanted to prioritize those budgetary, budgetary, uh, priorities, but there's probably a whole budget don't require, and you're right, and that should be, that should be a separate exercise to bang out some of the easier ones.
We even discussed, uh, trail development, we have a whole, a lot of people who probably volunteer, and youth, and, I mean.
No, 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 absolutely.
Could easily help clear and, and build.
Yeah, well, definitely.
You don't need an enge, well, when I say you don't need an engineer, you have to make sure it's feasible, but.
But it's not, so when you're talking about those types of trails and doing it now, you're not talking about necessarily through the woods, so if you're talking about public money on trails, now you're talking about EDA accessible, so what?
Bank path. It's all in the definition.
Yeah, it's all in the definition, so, yeah.
Maybe that's the key with the, the chaplain, is the bank path.
Um, so, I think that what would happen, what I, what I was really hoping to get from Sabrina, and, and these are the, I understand these are the top priorities, and I think Ivy's added a nice wrinkle, but as I said, she was gonna get back to us with, you know, what would be the right sort of level of depth, that maybe it costs a little bit, so rather than going and have to pay a whole new study, and then maybe what we need to do is like, if she could lay out the scope, so what are the next steps? And then maybe what we need to do is like, if she could lay out the scope, so what are the next steps, so from her perspective.
But is that the way you wanna do it, don't you wanna give her the priorities and have her?
Well, which, but what she hasn't given us really is kind of a, a work plan to achieve those goals, so if you're saying.
But that's because there's, because there's a hundred and something of them.
No, no, but here, if these are the priorities and you're now telling me that there's preliminary work that can be done in-house before we take it to the next step, I think that's the part that I don't understand. From, based on this, like, I'm not fine with these priorities, but.
I'm sorry, we're supposed to judge progress.
How are we supposed to judge progress?
Do you mean these priorities or this?
Or whatever, what, all of these are fine by me.
Okay, so, okay.
Or anyone that's got three votes is fine by me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm totally confused by your question.
So we have right here, we've got a lot of stuff, so sidewalk on major routes, develop the comprehensive sidewalk plan, five people.
Sure, for sure. These three and the bottom.
The bottom three, right.
Yeah.
So Ivy asked about low hanging fruit. And Jill brought up the fact that the sidewalk plan, the trail plan, some of the other stuff. It would require in-house work in advance before sending it out to a consultant in order to do the study. So what I guess I'm missing is, here are the priorities, now what are the steps that have to be taken to actually get the end results? If it's some of it's gonna be in-house work, some of it's gonna be an outside, you know, issue an R, develop a scope of work based on in-house work, issue an RFP, develop a study.
Okay.
But I think that part is kind of missing because. If it is gonna be part of the goals and objectives.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it could drag on for two or three years and we won't know where we are in the process without a way to sort of benchmark.
Well, I'm, I am happy to do that for you, but, but I almost feel like you're getting ahead of me, only because we haven't put together the goals and objectives. So all I was trying to get from the board tonight is, on the basis of the initial priorities that you set out when you were looking at the budget and making sure that there was funding available to be able to move forward with some of these. That, um, we reviewed with our, our entire new board, what the conclusions that we had based our budget on. And now that we're setting February sixth is our target date to take a look at our goals and objectives and sort of rearrange and recalibrate.
Can we not do it February sixth, I'm not here.
Oh, sure, picking up, yeah, absolutely, but anyway, so whatever that date's going to be, I was just taking the work session.
Yeah.
Um, is that, um, I would get an idea from the board as to where this all falls. And understanding that there were other things that maybe didn't have the financial implications to it, that the board still wanted to move ahead with. There are things that we have. That are continuations of things that we've already set before and goals and objectives and is there something else you want to do to add to this or other things here, or do you want us to take anything off this list?
Sure.
Well, we could, just, 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 like, for example, with my thing.
Yes.
You know, it says strengthen zoning codes, but the actual LBE three one is strengthening zoning codes to encourage the provision of mixed use, multifamily condominiums, townhouse apartments, senior workforce housing. And accessory dwelling units in, in or in proximity to the hamlets. I mean, that's something we talked about, we're trying to get, you know.
Sorry, shorthand in it, yes.
No, it's okay, but the point is though that, um, but actually that's sort of consistent with the other one anyway, which is.
Which is being info.
Info, exactly, so you don't really, we could take that off, because my thing.
Well, or else we'll just group it, group it together, I mean, that's just.
Because it's the same thing, really.
Or it would be step two or step three, you know, once you have the analysis, then you can do the zoning, so it's part of the same, but that's why I was trying to get a continuum.
Right. Right, exactly, right, and do the zoning, right.
To actually get an end result that you can make grounded decisions in.
So I sort of see these bottom three are kind of all related.
Mm-hmm.
So it, when you kind of add up all the check marks on those bottom three, I think there's enough that we do that, and then the top three.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, clearly the top three.
We basically all almost agreed with all three of those, so maybe those are the.
Yeah.
What we wanna focus on and then have Sabrina talk to us, look at, with that in mind, look at it and say, okay, these would be the steps in order to implement these goals.
But, and also just with the net, the feasibility business group district, I know only, I don't know, I checked it off, but we have already started talking about that in the context of the sidewalk maintenance thing.
Right.
So, you know, that might be a conversation we continue as well.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Well, I think that, I think that, but, I just, I, the, we should, the business improvement district. I thought would flow, would be a kind of, um, not just a sidewalk maintenance going forward, I thought the business improvement district would be the old fashioned bid district. Where somebody would come in and, you know, in order to take advantage of the changed zoning or the increased info would basically pay to play. Yeah, not, I know you don't like those words, but pay to play, come in because they're contributing to the cost of the improvement.
Right, but I mean, I, it's just a, starting a conversation, because we're talking about the, taking care of the sidewalks and slow, and clearing the sidewalks, it's just to begin, it's all part of it, but it's not the, it's not the only thing.
It's also talking about potential, you know, tax breaks, we can give people to come in, it's, it's kind of analyzing all of that to get new developments, our new retail and.
And I even think the first one that you have up here, ten four and ten two are also lumped in with thirty five one, eleven one, and thirty nine one, all of those are related.
Yeah, they're, they're really all related.
Yeah, it's just a question of increasing connectivity.
Yeah.
And in a safe way. Pedestrian friendly.
Okay, all right, we have a little cut out for us.
I just worry, especially on one seventeen, I see kids walking on one seventeen.
I know, they walk away, so.
All the time from the high school and the, the, uh, track teams run, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's gonna get worse.
It's crazy.
Needs to, and, and the traffic's only gonna get significantly worse there.
In fact, I think that the high school was very excited, um, when we were talking about putting that path behind the high school.
No, I mean, honestly, a lot of people were, and what I was just thinking, I mean, you talk about building sidewalks, any amount of property that we'd have to take in order to landowners. You know, if you, if we follow the trunk line of the county, but you have no web lands, cause it's above the trunk line. That, you know, it does, it does come on some people's properties, but it's, it's, it's a less, it's a less, a lot less people impacted with doing that than, uh. You know, for example, the temp, the sidewalk from the temple to the mobile station, I think that involved twenty-three properties, taking property from twenty-three landowners. The chap line, I think it, it, it would, going along the trunk line would hit, I think, five properties, and I think three of them are really far back.
Well, the difference being two, well, the difference is two.
And that gets you from Bell, from downtown all the way up to the, to the high school.
Right, well, the difference two is, we was doing it before, the problem on one seventeen, whether it's two houses or fifty, it's, those houses are right on one seventeen, there's only so much you can take.
Right.
But not even that, I mean, I see trucks all the time crossing the line, so then cars are trying to veer off to the side, and if there's a sidewalk there with a person on it, it's really dangerous.
It's an error, it's just, it's, it's windy.
But it's an error, but.
It's a what?
I said, but it's an error, but it's a total two, you know.
But that's before the new requirement, but we're gonna talk to them better.
But I mean, the, also, I mean, I think the comprehensive, this is what Lisa and I were just whispering to each other about, the comprehensive sidewalk plan, I think just to build sidewalks along one seventeen too.
No.
The thing that we started to hear more about from residents is that they don't, that they want sidewalks everywhere, so, you know, we're hearing a lot right now from people who want sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Douglas.
Well, Douglas is some, a place where we could actually.
Do it, because it's.
That, that's an area that's town controlled and it's, uh, we're just waiting for them to do that, the gas line, which is a reason it hasn't been paved either, and it could be done at the same time.
Some of it.
Yes.
Should be done at the same time.
But we need kind of have to do the gas line. We're actually trying to get them to lock in to some, some timeframes.
Yes, we have it, Marquardt, Douglas, there's a whole bunch of them that we've been waiting on, that we know from the frequency of repairs that they're due, we, you know, they can't deny it, but.
Do you want to see how Sabrina's doing?
Sure.
Should we do Jennifer?
We need Sabrina.
You wanna do, uh, just came in a client over here and.
Can we do the hydrant while John and Jason are here?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, we do. So, um, this request is for, um, authorization for an RFT for engineering services for hydraulic water distribution system model.
We can do the hydrant.
As part of our proposed, um, IMA with the fire districts for hydrant maintenance. We're seeking to create a hydraulic water distribution system model. It was actually at the recommendation of the ISO that we're pursuing it. It is in addition to flow testing that's done by ISO on a regular basis and, um. What other questions do you have about?
Well, I, can I just, can I just, so, the idea is, is that you've got a sewer main, you've got the sewer lines all the way throughout town. And there's different size, I mean, uh, water pipes all the way throughout town and there's different sized mains, a different juncture point, so on and so forth.
I'm sorry, sewer.
Instead of doing flow testing on each and every hydrant, what you do is you get some like engineering mathematician kind of a guy. Who models out the water pressure and then picks every nth hydrant as a representative hydrant for the health of the whole system. And you do a subset and then you project out, if I understood it correctly.
That's hard to understand.
Yeah.
We, we have no objections to it, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I think it'll cut costs of yet.
Um, we think so too, um, it also is very useful in, uh, flushing of hydrants as well, evidently there's a, there's a system to it, um, so that, I, all the hydrants. So that the flow goes in the same direction at all times, instead of, you know, opening ones at random, yeah, it's not serving its purpose. We're also a little concerned about, um, uh, damage to, uh, to property when we take in, we let hydrants go full flow. You know, a lot of these are in, on people's, what appears to be people's lawns.
Isn't one flooding?
Yeah, um, flooding and, and also just erosion. Unlike cities that, you know, let the hydrants go, they go into the, the street, you know, it's not a problem, there's a storm drain right there, they don't affect anything, you know. We have people's, uh, hydrants, you know, smack in the middle of landscape lawns and then when that goes, it's, nothing's going well. Anyway, um, so, um, I apologize, I got, uh, the, the approval to take in circularly, purely this draft, we're about five o'clock tonight, I will.
Oh, great.
Try to do it right after this meeting, I know it's owed to you, um, and then I'm looking forward to our meeting, I think it's gonna be great, I'm very happy to get us all on the same page and moving forward.
Yeah. Sounds great.
Good.
Okay, good.
All right, so that's, you all agree?
No, okay.
Sabrina can come in when we need her to, um, they're on their second application.
Well, we're ready.
So we're ready for her, because we'd like to be able to do the approvals and, uh.
Like Jennifer, you wanna, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
To the hot seat. She probably get another shirt after this.
Karen, she'll be coming in.
She got one.
You thought he's making a break for it?
I know.
All right, so, uh. That's a way for Sabrina to be up to, good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
I have to make a note of that, I'm here on the eighth, so I don't say anything else, so. We might be doing record interviews, would you prefer we not do them that day? On the day you see the recommission?
I thought it was only one person, I don't think.
Yeah.
Is it only one person at fun, so, so fun, yeah, just have the one.
It's Ted Holmes, which you probably know anyway, because the guy.
Oh, sure, I know him.
I don't need to be here.
Sorry.
Are you?
Hi, good, how's it going?
Okay, here we are again, the electric vehicle.
Electric vehicle, so, why don't you give the board the update?
Sure, so, given your lively discussion at the end of last year. Um, we went back and, um, we spoke with NYSERDA and asked them kind of what our choices are, whether there was additional funding. Understanding that the town did not want to involve a third party. Um, they were helpful in that they reviewed our application materials, there's no additional money, but a, a smaller van would qualify an electric van. So I went back to some earlier work that we had done with SAB with Jennifer. Um, and contacted a vendor called Zenith Motors, who is a sole source electric van provider. Um, it works very much like a, an electric vehicle, a passenger car. Um, with the quote that we received in the fall and the updated quotes that I had provided to you in my memorandum on Friday. We could use, um, a portion of the grant, there would still be a remaining amount to put towards the LED light conversion in downtown. So we could purchase an electric van using the funds if the board is amenable to doing that. Um, my memo clearly outlines kind of the, the quotes and kind of the, the financial surrounding it. Additional work will need to be done to determine whether or not we need to pay state tax, so on and so forth, but. One of the more important aspects of it is that NYSERDA is in support of us purchasing this van. There would, we would not need to change the project in the grant application, we would just need to change what's considered the metrics, the greenhouse gas metrics. Um, which is based off of programming and mileage, so, um, I've had preliminary conversations with, um, Ike down in Parks Department. And, um, kind of gave him a heads up that we would need to program the electric van, what we could use it for, how often it would run, what distances it would travel. Um, and then we'd come to you with any new programming that we thought the town could support, um, with the van per your direction. So there's some additional work that needs to be done before we can actually go into contract when NYSERDA to obtain the funding. Um, I also provided you lead times, um, in relation to purchasing the vehicle. We have to have it purchased by May, in, entitled by May thirty first in order to take advantage of the state vouchers. Taking advantage of the state vouchers is the only way that we can purchase the vehicle without using the entirety. And additional monies of the, of the CEC grant award, so we'd wanna be timely with that.
Well. Well, I mean, listen, I think it's, I think it's great that we have the option, we could work with some greenfield or not work with some greenfield, we, we could, we don't need their contribution, we don't want it. Personally, I don't think we should rule it out, I mean, I like, I wanna keep it simple, believe me, and I understand it gets comp, complicated with working with some greenfield. But if they're gonna contribute forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, whatever we agreed to, and even if we don't need the money, that's still money that we can use and, uh, what?
I, I, I just, I, I wanted to be clear that the van is much smaller, the, the board has.
Yeah, well, well, first of all, collection goes from what to what?
It's nine to sixteen, it's nine to sixteen passenger, if you, they're both.
Twenty-four, sixteen.
Just sixteen and nine. I mean, nine seems a waste.
They're both handicapped access, well, let me, let me, let me.
Sixteen seems a waste.
Why?
You might as well, if you're gonna do it, it seems to me, if it's going to happen, you wanna make it as useful as possible, but nine people at a time?
No, 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 sixteen, so it's nine, they call it nine to, it's, it's seat sixteen.
You're limited sixteen. Why is it nine?
Without being, no, 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 the, the vehicle, both vans, both quotes are handicapped accessible.
It's one, nine, it's.
The nine passenger is a wheelchair accessible van, if we opt not to have a wheelchair accessible van, it would be a sixteen passenger van, yeah.
So this goes back to my question.
So sixteen, I'm sorry, so a sixteen would be sixteen plus a wheelchair and not a wheelchair.
No, 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 no.
Wheelchair, yeah.
The wheelchair.
So this goes back to the question I have, because I felt to a certain extent, um, and I distributed some of the sample runs that the senior center does. Um, back when we're having the discussion way back when, and, um, I would think that maybe fifty percent of them are probably ineligible. Because they could go beyond a round trip of a hundred and forty miles, but fifty percent of them actually probably would be eligible. And if you are considering, um, using this for the seniors, because I know that that's come up a number of different times, the seniors would be one of the heavier users of this van. I think we should put that programming, we should do the legwork on the programming now, because nine may be, if it's good, and they do actually have some people in wheelchairs. Um, so we would need to assume that that was the maximum capacity of two people with a wheelchair, is that what that basis is?
No, one wheelchair, it is one wheelchair.
One wheelchair, right, so we. So I, I kind of feel to a certain extent that the specifications of the van and its utility should be discussed with the people in the. See, you do the activities with Brittany, I think does them.
Mm-hmm, she does some of the counting, does others.
But that should at least sort of be discussed, because if it ends up not being useful to them, because of, you know, we've got two people regularly take these trips who are in wheelchairs, or we've got. People with walkers, or we have, you know, whatever happens to be.
But it's accessible to those.
The sixteen passenger is handicapped accessible, it's just not able to do, to.
Accessible. To do a lift, do a wheelchair.
Well, as I said, I think that conversation is a conversation that happened before, should happen sooner and have that programming come back.
Right, so, so we already, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. No, it's a different topic, so.
Okay, so, I, I know that you talked about some of like the trip trips, like the long distance trips, but when we were talking about the senior van, our senior, our senior program runs vans. All day, every day, multiple times a day, takes people shopping, um, doctor's appointments, uh, we run meals on wheels. We do a whole slew of things with vehicles.
Well, meals and wheels are done by individuals and private cars.
And sometimes we use our, our cars for it, so it's, 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 it's both. And sometimes we use our our cars for it, so it's 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 both. Um, Brittany uses our town vehicles to do it, sometimes she uses, you know, she takes the van when she does it. The the point is is that we have other programming that we would not have considered like the twenty-two passenger Summit Greenfield van for. But the sixteen person van, we probably would, um, to be able to shuttle our seniors back and forth. The other thing is is that, um, while we, um. While we have vans and we do take and do coach buses when we go or do our regular trips. We're unable to offer transportation to those seniors that stay home. Um, because we don't have another vehicle and or we don't have another driver, as it turns out, we budgeted for another driver this year. And we would love to be able to take and expand our senior programming, um, we have additional programs running at the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center this year, um, Lunch and Learn and. Some other terrific uh programs and to be able to offer um transportation for our seniors as well would be fabulous.
Is if if you purchase this electric van, is there another vehicle that's going to be sunset or retired as a result? Because I'm not clear how you'd be able to claim greenhouse gas emission reductions by buying something new. So unless we're able to take something off of the road and replace it. It doesn't seem to me that it's an, and that's my first observation, and then sort of piggybacking off of that. It just seems to me that I'm a little confused as to why we've gone this route. We had a resolution that was passed by the board at the end of last year, there was a specific purpose for that purchase. Um, and I feel like we're now grasping for a reason for this purchase.
Because the, no, because the the board had some issues, the board had issues with. Um, a commitment or a partnership with Summit Greenfield when Summit Greenfield already had a commitment to.
Well, no, I think. But we can do the show. Those issues were put aside and Sabrina was instructed to go and negotiate.
Right, I I I I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, I wouldn't have voted to pass that resolution, but the reason that I wouldn't have voted to pass, and.
No, but I mean.
You guys probably knew because I was in the room making a face, but the reason that I wouldn't have voted to pass it wasn't because I wouldn't have wanted to partner with Summit Greenfield, it was because the. Details of that agreement weren't worked out yet, and I didn't feel that it was prudent to move forward with the purchase. When we hadn't gotten an agreement from Summit Greenfield about the contribution that they were going to make, about who was gonna carry the insurance and what the maintenance and operations of the.
Right, we haven't worked on any of this.
Um, and so I felt that those details needed to be worked out, but I'm just sort of surprised that rather than working out some of those details, we've now pivoted. Um, to purchasing this sort of smaller electric van, which I don't see as a win for the environment. Because I don't see us being able to sunset another vehicle as a result of this purchase, but maybe I'm wrong.
I I mean, I I agree a hundred percent, but the thing is that I don't I don't look at this as a pivot, I look at this as just another option. And when we talk to Summit, I still think we should talk to Summit Greenfield, and I still think we should, you know. Try to work with them because of getting the gas guzzling their shuttle up the road. And but this is another option, and I think that, first of all, it's always good to have two options anytime you're doing negotiations anyway. And it is not, I mean listen, we did pass the resolution, we can go full steam ahead, but if we could also come to a re- uh something that everybody can live with, that's that's good too.
And I and I would really ask before we make this kind of decision that the programming for how this van is gonna be used, a realistic programming schedule of the right types of uses for this van. Be outlined, because if the van is on one level, not big enough for some things, but it's too small for other, you know, or too big for other things. I kind of feel that that needs to be explored and a sort of more, um, complete thoughtful process around that programming be done because. I get it, we can buy, get a hundred thousand bucks, we get a sixty thousand this, the van costs a hundred and sixty thousand, we have a part-time driver and then we've got insurance costs. I get it, but if we're just buying it versus option two, spend a lot more money on LED streetlights, but. You know, we already know what the purpose is because we already know we have them in the budget. So I think that it's unclear to me that the specifications of this reduced size van. Um, with longer mileage, which is a big huge advantage, actually make sure that it actually meets the needs of the constituents that have to use it.
Well, our our feeling was is that a smaller van that could take and do multiple trips back and forth. From some, whether it be Chappaqua Crossing to the train station, vice versa, um, for a price that we could afford. Was still a better option than necessarily going with a much larger vehicle that had a much shorter range.
It just seems to me that with that much housing up there ultimately and that much property there for retail purposes or whatever you wanna call it, a nine-person shuttle.
But it's not nine, it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Even sixteen would use it for handicaps.
But then if if it, but if it's not, if it's if it's handicap accessible but not wheelchair accessible, does that make it less valuable to the senior citizens?
It's just not that many people.
So so. So so the the intent of the smaller vehicle was not to do a run between Chappaqua Crossing and the train station, okay, the the.
Right. That's all.
The purchase of the van was to be used for town purposes, for town goals on our, in the springtime when we have community day. To connect Millwood to Chappaqua, to do town programming that we would really want to strengthen. Our hamlets and connections, you know, with Getney Park and and all of that, as well as use it for existing programs and. You're right, you know, I've only taken, you know, kind of one step in the programming. Because we really need to get a sense of where the board really wants to be, because last time we met, it was loud and clear that we did not budget to purchase a big shuttle bus. The difference between a shuttle van, the shuttle bus is twenty-two to twenty-six passengers, the shuttle, the the.
Also not handicap, not wheelchair.
So 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 if I'm understanding, just little Rob, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's, and I'm sorry that that I'm butchering it. Summit Greenfield would still have its responsibility and its own gas van or gas shuttle, and we'd have our new vehicle.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that goes back to what I think I what I was saying here.
But I I have heard from, I've heard from a lot of residents, can we have, can the town provide a shuttle, nothing to do with Summit Greenfield.
We would we would rather.
To allow kind of a loop for people who either can't drive or don't have cars or whatever it may be, to go from Millwood to downtown Chappaqua and then potentially up to Chappaqua.
Is it gonna pick up people's homes? If they can't, if they can't drive, then how are they getting to the central point to get picked up?
No, no, no. And 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 really, I don't know, they can walk, I don't know, but. I'm gonna, I I you know, I actually have heard, actually kind of the opposite from a lot of residents, which is.
I understand.
What is?
We would rather stay with what was agreed to in December, I think the concern that. Sabrina and others had was that the town board perhaps is not fully behind that decision. And therefore, if the town board's not fully behind that decision, we have a very short timeframe to get the money from this grant.
Well, I can tell you.
And so, and so. If we could get comfortable that this town board is behind that decision from December, then we could stay with where we were. I think Sabrina is offering another option because perhaps the town board could get better behind her revised option, I think that's very what's happening.
Well, if we were to do, Rob, take a second vote again with the new composition of the board.
No, you see, that's that would be very convenient, but but what happened is.
I I, well, that's, that's, there's a lot of assumptions, so.
This is, this, no, it's, you see, this is what, this is so much for trying to make people happy. So December, December nineteenth, there was a resolution passed and that resolution is is in effect. However, if we can come up with an option that everybody feels comfortable with, then it, you know, then like, so this isn't a question of rewriting history. This is a question of trying to come up with a compromise based on the resolution that was already passed, that more people can get behind. Personally, I know the Sustainability Advisory Board. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, prefers the initial plan, I see the benefits of the initial plan too, in the sense that we. We abide by the Paris Accord like we, like this town board, I know you would have too, but the prior town board agreed to do. We reduce the greenhouse gas emissions, we get the diesel.
Which you don't do with the new plan.
Shuttle bus off the, well, we wouldn't do it the news plan, right, which is why I think we should stick with this.
Right, right. The new plan helps for, it actually may help more because the maximum range of that bus on any given day was between seventy and ninety miles.
What what if, what if.
And now we're close to a hundred and forty-five, so by definition.
I I would, I personally think we did both.
Buying something new is never, buying something new that you don't have an intent, intent purpose for.
A purpose for.
Is not an environmentally friendly investment, in my opinion.
But 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 we're already doing these runs, whether it be the the senior runs that we're already doing with with smaller gas cars. Or we take and we use the electric for an obligation that we know is going to start within the next two months whenever they do occupancy.
Co- correct, I mean, I I have, I.
Well, why's why's it not big enough, why's it not big enough, let me ask you this, but.
It's big enough.
Why is it not, why is a sixteen person van not big enough to fulfill Summit Greenfield's obligation? I personally think we go with the smaller van, we get as much money as possible from Summit Greenfield, we let them use that for their obligation. And we get, we can actually walk away with more money for LED lights, because now we're getting, we don't need their money to actually pay for the thing, it's a win-win for everybody.
And refreshment, was it, was it, please refresh my rec- recollection, in the initial agreement which we were part of, what was, was there a minimum number of seats that required?
No, there was not, there there was not a minimum number of seats.
No.
They, um, they historically, Reuters Digest used vans to shuttle people back and forth from the train station. Their intent when they first agreed to this obligation was a van. We started talking about the larger community need of this shuttle and when their site was fully built out. And we thought that a shuttle bus would be more attractive for people to, and more comfortable for people to ride it.
And that's what they agreed for that type of.
And they and they agreed, we had yet to get to the point where we were meeting on their financial contribution. Again, those negotiations had not been fully fleshed out.
Well, well, to to, I'm sorry.
I I was just gonna say, for me, that's a huge missing piece, so for me, the budget that exists today. I I feel like I couldn't in good conscience move forward with either this plan or the old plan. Because there's all of these sort of missing pieces for me about what's the full budget for this initiative, because it's, the way that it's written today, the budget is treated as though it's just the purchase. And so for me, there's these sort of missing components about who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance, who's gonna be responsible for the insurance, who's gonna be responsible for the ongoing operations. Who's gonna be responsible for the staff that's gonna be driving the bus, so like all of these questions that still have to be answered in either plan for me is still is still a gap.
So it was always envisioned with a partnership with Summit Greenfield. That we would supply the vehicle, they would be responsible for everything else, period.
And that was the memo, that was the memo.
But but for the fact, but for the fact.
No, 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 I know it's a number, but no, but. Have that agreement, like.
But no, we spoke into that, right?
Right, we, I have spoken with them about that, I don't have it in writing, but those have been the conversations where.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't gotten to agreement is they were envisioning thirty thousand dollars for purchase of their diesel van. That is the one thing, so like, so so they were only gonna give us.
Well, they were gonna refurb, they weren't talking about a new one, so they were gonna refurb, they were gonna refurbish one.
They were refurbishing.
Exactly.
But that that doesn't.
Well, actually, I think that may be more environmentally friendly to use something that already exists today than buy something new.
But that's not true.
And a sixteen, and a sixteen person.
So you have to do that, and there's a diesel, and there's a.
Guess, and they're waiting together and idling and. No, no, and a sixteen person van actually, uh, having gone from Scarborough and from Crotton where there's a lot of large, um. Condo kind of multifamily complexes, if the van is continually running, sixteen people is about, you get anywhere from eight to twelve at any given run, depending on the time of day. So that probably be fine for Summit Greenfield, but the, I know we're talking about the carbon footprint. But I actually feel that us as a town board, if we were doing our, if if we were lucky enough to be able to do the right thing by the Chappaqua hamlet. Instead of having fourteen to sixteen trips coming from Summit Greenfield and say we're, you know, reading the Paris Accord, I want two hundred trips coming into downtown Chappaqua. Because it's a place that people wanna come to.
Yeah, but you need people to to.
So.
You don't want two hundred trips coming into downtown Chappaqua.
You need people to. You need, you need people to.
Or two hundred people, however you wanna talk about it.
You need, you need people to to wanna run, I mean, listen, if we own the shuttle, if we own the shuttle, no matter which one it is. The fact is Summit Greenfield has an obligation, has a contractual obligation to, in the zoning code, they have an obligation. If it turns out nobody's using their shuttle, then they can, we can, you know, if the conditions are right for us, we can release some of their obligation. The bottom line is, we're still gonna control this vehicle, we can control the schedule, we may tell them, you know something, it's, nobody's going on the hours that we envisioned. But maybe we want, if we're after school, we can get some kids to go from downtown Chappaqua to Chappaqua Crossing or something, go back and forth, I mean, who knows what it's gonna be? But the point is, we would have the flexibility, because it's our vehicle to 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 figure out where the need is and to have the shuttle operate during those hours.
I mean, I love the idea of being being able to connect restaurants and retail down here to even shows going on in Chappaqua, and being able to move people back and forth.
Yeah, at night, exactly. We don't know what it's gonna be, but the point is that we own it, we control it.
So.
So Sabrina, would it be helpful to you, I just wrote down what I heard is the five versions of what's, so you've got Plan A, twenty-four person with Summit Greenfield, Plan B, twenty-four people without Summit Greenfield. That kind of stuff, if I create a matrix, um, with.
Yep.
I love your matrix.
You know, with sort of my understanding of where we are right now, with outstanding questions that maybe need to be populated to make a better decision.
So.
And share that, is that something you and Jennifer could help us fill out?
I I I I think what Jennifer and I are hearing today, to be quite honest with you, is that you are kind of agreeing on the size of the vehicle at nine to sixteen passengers.
Well, no, I'd like to know the programming, that's not what you're hearing.
But but here's the thing, the, I do not know the programming if the town was to own and operate it and possibly. Replace the electric vehicle with current gasoline or diesel vehicles that we use, I do not know that. I don't even know how that would work, we would have to investigate that and really look at programming, that's existing programming, okay? We know that Summit Greenfield has an obligation, this is the first time I'm hearing that there that there may be interest in purchasing a van and providing it to Summit Greenfield. To run his program, his diesel route that he is required to run and to further extend the hours of that route to meet community need.
But we can't if it's running its route.
No, but they may not need, he may not need it for the intended route, and then it could all be.
Yeah, but but I I have to tell you, uh, Chappaqua Performing Arts on the weekends, the the bus is not running during weekend hours for Chappaqua Performing Arts Center.
But that's why if we owned it, we were saying, we we always talked about this, that we'd be able to utilize it for our own reasons on the weekend.
He, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, this is a.
Absolutely, but we're now talking about a nine to sixteen passenger van that's not dependent on outside income from a third party.
But we get still a future.
That's the difference here, a a a twenty-two passenger shuttle bus, the town does not have a budget. To foot the purchase of that entire bus itself.
Right.
And still have money for some LED light replacements.
So so I in your convers, I I get it, so in your conversations, I get, I figured Chappaqua Crossing was one of those ones spent about thirty thousand bucks, but. Were they prepared to hire the drivers?
That doesn't.
Yes.
No, that doesn't include, that doesn't include.
They were prepared to do that.
And they were prepared to ensure and maintain the vehicle, yes.
And the gas, that doesn't include.
All the expenses.
That was only thirty thousand dollars, which was the vehicle.
Charging stations. Thirty plus operating with visual lights and maintenance expenses.
It was a purchase price.
Yeah, it was not for their operating, the operating budget, they have more flexibility because.
They have a mechanic on site.
Well, it's not only that, it's it's an operating budget, like it's not, there's not a number earmarked for it already in their, uh, like, you know, in their.
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna do it, um.
I understand.
I I personally, if we get the six, I'm not gonna say nine to sixteen, we get a sixteen person one, forget about the LED lights, like. Jeremy, I know one of your things is trying to fix the Whipple, the one seventeen Whipple Road intersection. Listen, he's gonna be working on one seventeen, he's gonna be getting permits for one seventeen, he's gonna be having equipment on one seventeen. He could fix the one seventeen at Whipple Will too, and that could be part of our deal, but basically.
That's supposed, that's that, that one or the other, in fact.
It does, because that's ten plus money.
Because he's already said, but I I believe he, when he say he, Summit Greenfield, we've already said, if I'm correct. Well, they weren't promising anything, and there was nothing contractual, and tell me if I'm wrong, that they would assist on that front.
On some of the soft costs.
Yeah, so I mean, we're not talking about, yeah, but it's.
That's engineering.
So we're not, yeah, so we're not talking about doing it, and when I told him I'm getting the permit and you know the equipment, I mean, I'm not saying that this is something to do, I'm just saying by working together with them.
We're on our costs, or we're.
Even if we don't need their money per se to buy the vehicle, money is money and there's other projects we have, and the fact is, they're gonna be working on one seventeen, and if improving one seventeen is a priority for us, that's something else to consider.
Well, there's certainly a lot of balls in general, I I agree on that front.
There's benefits to working with them, you know, this is the biggest real, commercial real estate holder in town.
A hundred percent.
The more we can work, we're done, the better, as long as it's a win-win for everybody.
A hundred percent.
Well, I just feel like we've had a very long time, we've been talking about talking to Summit Greenfield for a very long time and.
For that matter, we're still waiting on alleged one point five million dollars for the tag.
Yeah, I kind of feel like.
Well, we really haven't pushed it, we can, you know, that's not an issue, we just.
Well, it was, first was gonna be June, then it was gonna be September.
We're talking to them. Sabrina, you had said at the outset that the town had to be entitled by May thirty-one on our vehicle.
Yeah, we need to own it.
So if working backwards from May thirty-one, how much time do we need to allow for?
We we, NYSERDA is looking for an answer from us, we were supposed to have a call today, we told them we'd get back to them tomorrow, they need to know what we're doing.
What what is our hard real time?
Why can't we have Summit Greenfield, there's a nine to sixteen press conference.
May thirty first, we need to own it.
That I understand, I understand, but as Ed said, what's to working backwards, what's the turnaround time?
Working backwards, i- if you want a program, if we were to purchase and run this thing ourselves, it's going to take a bit. Because there's, we have to look at programming, we have to look at where vehicles are.
Sixty days, ninety days.
I I'd say that's at least sixty days, okay, to get you a solid program where we could calculate greenhouse gas emissions. If we're talking about a conversation, a negotiation with Summit Greenfield, it can happen within thirty days, I truly believe. They have an obligation to get their shuttle running ASAP.
So let's get some real numbers and real
Yeah.
with Summit Greenfield, and I I don't think anyone here wants to risk losing those dollars at all.
I'd I'd be always that makes sure that nine to sixteen is.
Well, why don't, and let me put together a matrix, because maybe if there's a structure to fill it in.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, we have a western nine.
So that assumption being, was a nine would be with with pay tax, except. To collect the information that people are interested in.
That that would make it easier.
We wish it.
With a lift lift on it for a wheelchair, that's how many seats it has to be, but I might just run it by the board.
Yeah, what do you think?
So we're.
But Sabrina.
But I absolutely, no, then I don't need it tomorrow, but.
A- adding on to your timeframe to to Ed's question too, if we want to say we all agree we're gonna purchase this vehicle, what is the
To eight weeks.
six, okay, that's one, six to eight weeks.
And we have to make sure that this.
Yes, why is it a, why is it sole source eligible?
Because they're the ones to make.
Because there's no one that there's because.
There's no one else who makes electric vans?
Not they it's it's not, not of this type, no.
Not the source.
There were, when I went back to Motive, which was the other vendor we were talking to about the shuttle bus, they do not do anything smaller than a Ford F four fifty chassis.
Yeah.
So this is the only vendor, th- th- this is still a Ford vehicle, it's a Ford van. Um but they're the only outfit that does an electric platform that we are looking at.
Are we sure that this the sixteen person shuttle it will, it's big enough for Summit Greenfield? Do we know that for sure yet?
Yeah, yeah, sixteen should be great.
I know, but just from their point of view, I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, if it's going back before.
I think it's still gonna have fifteen extra seats.
I'm operating under under the door dollar.
It doesn't ever show.
I'm riding one of those same.
I I just know.
I I think it's gonna be fifteen extra seats, but uh.
So I appreciate that too, you know that and feel comfortable, but I I just I don't know what that would be based on, so I'd have to hear from you.
I just look at super large condos and how they take them down the train system.
Well, yeah, but but it's not for them, it's for.
But I think that's.
No, but it has a, which is not a potential to purpose.
Isn't it for the people to build this?
No, no, because we also have.
It's workers.
I'm just very confused because is is this town board willing to use a smaller van, but still partner with Summit Greenfield?
Yes.
I I definitely am.
Yes.
Yeah, if Summit Greenfield is coming to the table, they have to be involved and there's money there, then we'd be foolish not to explore that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
We're foolish not to explore their money.
Or would you want to explore, or should we take off the table, the smaller van and not partnering with Summit Greenfield?
Can I ask you a question? You're from the sustainability board, what is your preference?
Well, she's big van, big day.
I mean, having through all of these conversations and all the further work that you've explored, what's what's your?
Yeah, our our, my preference was the bigger van with a full partnership with Summit Greenfield.
But what's, why don't we have the same preference for a smaller van with a full partnership with Summit?
Yeah.
Because that frees up more dollars for the rest, because because they're costing the same.
Because they.
It's not maybe.
Like it's so pretty on the road.
They can afford it.
No, is that is that 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 can't, that's what I'm asking, no, 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 I'm I am curious, if if
No, I'm.
No, that's.
I I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said.
If we think if we think sixteen will meet the needs of Summit Greenfield, why would you, why would you want the the larger, what's the best thing?
Yeah, why why would you, right.
I think I think you may find opportunities to have more uses for the town outside of the Summit Greenfield run.
Well, we're gonna use that the small one, we're gonna use it the small one for that too.
Like on the weekend.
Yeah, but she but regardless, but the preference would be to buy a larger vehicle because there's other programming, particularly as we were developing the comprehensive plan and the discussions that have occurred about revitalization of hamlets and whatnot, let me finish. And revitalization of hamlet, so if you look at the long-term light, long-term life of this type of vehicle, a shuttle van may hit more of those goals that you have all been discussing.
Yeah, but the the problem, the bigger van is 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 the single largest problem with the bigger van is its range, yeah.
The bigger one, the bigger the bigger van.
It's seventy-five miles.
So this is a good, the smaller one is a good compromise.
Forty-nine dollars.
Well, ninety, ninety.
Well, you know, God forbid the air conditioning is running or the heating is running on another island because the old people are taking, you know, the old people want like those longer.
Okay, but but this is.
And I'm gonna back.
Okay, but this is.
But I I like thirty-five.
Me, me.
Old people, but the smaller one is a big compromise.
The range is ninety and that reflects air conditioning and heating on all the time.
I like the larger range.
Well, my previous was supposed to get fifty and it doesn't, so whatever.
But you're also, your previous is a different battery.
It's a different battery, it's a different battery.
I know, but so listen, can we authorize Sabrina and Jill and Ed and whoever needs to to talk to Summit Greenfield and see what kind of deal we can come to with them and then and then come back to us?
Let's see, I think we have to.
For the small, for the small all the way.
Quick, I mean, well, if they say we're only giving ten thousand dollars, we may say, fine, then go buy yourself your own van, but.
No, they're not, and by the way, with their van that they're refurbishing, that their van that they're refurbishing, there it wasn't gonna be a twenty-four person, it was probably gonna be a sixteen person van. I don't think they were talking about such a big van anyway.
Well, it's.
But they weren't.
I I'd like to find out, what what was the stuff from the conversation?
So can we authorize them to talk to Summit Greenfield?
They don't, they just want this obligation to disappear.
Yes.
So so they're gonna put as little money into this as possible.
I understand, and by the way, after they give us their money, the obligation may disappear, because if nobody's using it, we could it could disappear and then and then we have a van that they help chip in. And and by the way, if they want their obligation to disappear, they're gonna have to give us other things.
I I have a feeling that the Summit Greenfield jitney, because I'm gonna call it what it is, would be a popular item based on other people, other other kinds of developments with a similar purpose.
I I hope it is.
No, I think you're.
Yeah.
I hope it is.
I'm I'm.
That doesn't mean they still don't want to drive it.
So I will give, what I will do is, but if it's all right with you guys, what I'll do is I'll put together
It may be great to not have all those cars going.
Yeah.
a matrix with the options as I understand them now, and I will circulate it to the board first to review, so that maybe there is a consistent piece of paper with all the um pieces of information that we wanna capture on these alternatives with all of the information one place instead of saying, oh, you know.
You know, you'll let us know, it's a.
Yeah, at the same time, to, at the same time, I think they can still talk to Summit Greenfield, well, they're gonna ask.
I would think you can have that conversation.
I would think.
Yeah.
Oh, of course they can, yeah.
And and by the way.
Real, I I we need to talk real dollars, real real dollars.
I I think.
I I.
But I think an element of this conversation with Summit Greenfield then has to be all of the other town uses that we potentially see for it.
Yeah.
And so if we if we've bought it and we own it, but they're operating it and they're maintaining it and they're insuring it, are we going to have the capability to be able to do any of the
Are you prepared?
Monday through Friday, we will.
We want it on the weekends, that's a complicated agreement.
Mon- Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, we will not, because Monday through Friday, it will, the van will be tied up with train service and connection between
To fulfill their obligation, right.
and connection between that site and Chapua.
Right.
The only times that we will be able to use the van during the week are after the peak hour train loop finishes.
And on the weekends, and on the weekends.
So they're gonna, so they're gonna pay for the insurance for the van and then we've got it on the weekends, running people up to Chapac and heaven forbid, there's an accident, what's gonna happen?
Well, let me, let's wake up Eric and ask.
We'll be co-insured, that's something that the lawyers work out.
Yeah.
Yeah, Arnie's right, it's not an easy agreement to draft, but he's.
It's great, it's doable, it's just, it's a little complicated.
Easy truth, Eric, we have a question for you.
Insurance question, you ready to share the insurance question?
Good morning.
What about it?
Could we have, let's say we have a shuttle bus with Summit Greenfield, that they're using Monday through Friday from from, let's say, eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night. We wanna use it at night, we wanna use it on the weekends.
Whoever owns the vehicle is responsible, period.
For the insurance.
You can't have a co-insured, even if it's whoever's on the.
No, no. You can't have an indemnification.
Can't have an indemnification. It goes by title.
Yeah, so unless you wanna co-title it, in which case you can sort of split the operation.
No, no. Great.
But if you're gonna set it up in one name or the other, you're on the hook.
But couldn't you have an indemnification?
Well, we're, so we're一样的, so it's our vehicle, we're on the hook.
Right, right.
Yeah, you could.
And you guys just sit back there listening to this.
We're, we're on the hook, if we own the vehicle, but it's operated by SG, we the town.
You're on the hook.
No, no, but Ed said we can have an indemnification agreement where they say if there's an injury between this time and this time.
But we have an indemnification.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
You can internally transfer by contractual obligation.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, right.
Responsibility to them. Whatever, whoever does the tenants.
Right.
But basically the primary lawsuit has to be brought against the town, but then you can arrange to have Summit Greenfield, Greenfield excuse me, pick up the responsibility for defending.
Right.
But that's a contractual obligation, separate from the primary obligation, which the the titled owner is always the primary responsible.
If I didn't know it better, I think you might know something about insurance.
Right.
That's P D L.
Good thing you see him, okay.
Right, so.
So, yeah, so I'll get the change, okay, please.
So that, so.
And by the way, I think I think the amount that's chipped in anyway, whether it's the sixteen person or the twenty-four person, they're not chipping in more for the twenty-four person.
Okay, thank you.
They're gonna chip in the same regardless, in my opinion.
That's. So Derek has, Summit Greenfield says, you know.
Yes.
We're grateful to hash this out. Nice to know, is it thirty thousand dollars, is it twenty thousand, is it forty, is it, what's that number, what's that number?
Well, that's what they're gonna, we're authorizing them to have that conversation.
Because I agree with you, money's money, money's money, and we can move it around.
What, so what do I tell my service tomorrow? Because they, I have to tell you that they're just shocked that that they're stumbling over this.
Well, we have, I mean, whether they're shocked or not, we have the ability.
I I understand.
We're, 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 we're gonna be talking with Summit Greenfield to. Tell them we're we're we're, we're, we're.
We're still working through.
It's a, it's a partnership of that's common.
Yeah, we're interested in the sixteen person.
I'm they, yeah.
Right.
And.
We have to work out the details of the public private partnership.
We just have to work out the details of the partnership, but.
But there's a definition.
I mean, but the resolution was passed.
Well, the resolution was passed and this and this satisfies, this more town board members can get behind us with a smaller van, and personally, I feel more comfortable with it too.
Costs a little.
Okay.
I'd be more inclined to a smaller van that costs less, that can still, that's what.
Well, that is, still you guys. And I would be more inclined to the smaller van once it confirmed, confirm that it meets the program needs of the heaviest users, so even if you identify who the heaviest users are, that would be beneficial.
Especially if.
Well, I'm only doing Summit Greenfield, so, no, no, it it would be, smaller van without Summit Greenfield is an option.
No, but the small, the small.
Smaller van without Summit.
We would need to explore all of our, uh, we'll talk to the senior.
They don't have the green.
Well, why would we not have Summit Greenfield if there were fifty thousand dollars?
Because. Well, we, because it's utility to, util, because the utility to us is is minimized.
Because what if they say they're not?
Assuming, yes, right.
But we don't get the benefits.
We own it, why don't we let them go by their own?
And and we need to know, we need, we need to know, we need to know where the damage would be.
And why don't we spend a hundred thousand dollars on street?
We need to know what the damage is.
But realistically, I mean, one of the the reason, real reason for this jitney was not so much the condo owners, condo
We can't.
Eighty thousand. as just to be able to get people to and from Chapua Crossing and this hamlet without having to use their cars to try to minimize some traffic. So realistically, even if what you're saying, we can't use it during those hours, if somebody wants to hop on that to go to something that we're having during the day at Chapua Crossing.
Of course, they can do that.
At the art center or something else, they can, even though we're not operating it, they can still utilize it.
They can do that. And they can do that with the existing jitney as well, right.
Yeah, but the thing is.
Yeah, this, the, if, just hearken back a little bit, the shuttle commitment existed prior to the housing
It's a great term.
Some, any of the places.
Department.
in the Coppola building, it was to connect the two sites, it was very important to the town
Right.
that Chapua not be left in the dust by new commercial development up at Chapua Crossing, that is his obligation to make sure, as we are supposed to do advertising and cross announcing to both areas to make sure that there's a connection.
And and just, the reason that, the reason the S A B is behind this, and and again, they, this is an energy grant, is to reduce, is to try to get this gas guzzling diesel off the road and replace it with.
And where does he have to start the grant?
Well, and and I have to.
Assuming that, assuming.
That's why I think this is so much better than than trying to use it for town purposes, like.
Right, exactly, I mean, let's not lose sight of the main purpose why the S A B is, and that's, that's why we got the grant in the first place because of our, in a pressure.
Everyone is.
Right, and we, so, sorry. I also want to bring your attention to.
Right.
But but we were, we've.
So we've come full circle.
Right.
The hard natural interest in this, especially.
As long as this town board is is behind a partnership with Summit Greenfield.
Right.
And that's, we were not feeling like this town board was necessarily comfortable with that.
Well, my my view, my my concern, sorry, I'm embarrassed.
The real reason was that. I think we should know what the terms of that partnership are going to be.
And I think it's gonna be a lot easier to swallow the terms of the partnership when it's it's a less cost, especially since the smaller shuttle is gonna, I feel probably serve their purpose just as well as the bigger one.
My my concerns remain the same as they always have been, since when I first talked with you in the spring or whenever it was about its other uses, to what I said in the last or whenever the date was when we approved it. But if it's going to happen to lessen our costs and to work with Summit Greenfield, it just makes sense from a fiscal perspective, so, and and a sustainability perspective, but
And sustainability.
um if we can get some extra dollars and use that elsewhere and move money around and still serve the sad and the the purpose, why would you pursue it, but we need to know real numbers, you need to get those real numbers.
Well, I mean, I would.
Sorry, I I have one point of clarification, because some of the town board members keep talking about the downtown lights. The lighting program for downtown, there are only three existing lights downtown, there's one on the corner up by King, and there's two roadway lights that would be replaced with LED lights, those are the only three lights in downtown in our eight hundred thousand streetscape, in our original, but going back to the point that Ivy makes
In your original, in your, in your original one, it was.
over you have to replace something to make it count towards greenhouse gas reduction.
Only replacing all of the light poles and that we're going with much.
Only.
And but you know, it doesn't go toward the poles, you can't use that or leave the bulbs.
No, that could be useful.
It does, if I, the original proposal as submitted to the town board specifically said it was a hundred thousand dollar purchase of LED light pole, so basically it would take out of
It the light poles are qualified, but not the light poles that are new.
the bombing, of the town's residents. The town, the town residents' responsibilities to pay for that as part of it would be shifted off, now I can go find the original memo.
You don't need to find the original memo.
And if it's changed, then it should have been sort of, it's it's like I'm dealing with like the most amorphous moving thing that seems to shape shift, and it's very difficult to follow.
I'm wondering if there's, I'm wondering if there's confusion between
There's the LED light.
the LED lights that are being installed throughout all of town.
No. That was, that was clarified.
Okay, so there's that, so throughout all of town, there are LED lights are be, are replacing all the existing lights, that's one project that's already in the budget and happening.
Yeah.
Right.
And then there are, there's the downtown streetscape that only has three existing lights that this grant could be applied towards.
Well, then I would like to have an explanation of that, because the original memo submitted by EU, when it was all of the options, whether it's solar panels and.
Yeah, because initially we thought we could pay for all of the lights.
So if there's been a change, can you just send me a quick note explaining the change?
But. But but, but I think I think the way, also not looking at it, I'll.
It's been five millos.
Not on this topic.
If 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 there's enough money that's left over, for lack of a better term, for the LED lights, and Summit Greenfield making up a number gives us thirty, twenty, fifty thousand dollars.
We apply that towards the light poles.
We can repurpose that anywhere we want.
Right, we're not limited by the grant.
Right.
Right, so we're getting, yeah, so we're getting that grant money through Summit Greenfield arguably, it's coming through a different source, but do you follow, we're we're getting access to dollars that we would have.
We're checking off.
I follow, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
So it doesn't matter whether it's those LED lights or another LED lighter.
Right, which is why I have that down on the on the matrix, and everything is clear.
Right.
We're checking off my boxes, I mean, listen, your matrix, I'm saying, your matrix could be also where you check off as many boxes as possible.
Yeah, so. We're doing.
Yeah.
Like LED lights, you got the van, you're satisfying it, you replay, getting their diesel bus up to room, you know, all these different, reducing greenhouse emissions, and which which one satisfies more the boxes? And working with Summit Greenfield with the smaller one will satisfy every box.
And we get money.
That's maximize our potential dollars in return, we'll do it right by our boundary.
But I I mean, I I go back to the fact, I don't think this is an easy negotiation with Summit Greenfield, because, I mean, we, to the point you were making back in December, we have to make sure we get to a point where it's truly a partnership and not a gift.
Right.
Yeah, but it's.
You know.
Well, so let's have the conversation, we get, so let's push it down.
Because with the larger van, it started to feel like a gift, it started to feel like the town was contributing much more than Summit Greenfield was.
But we don't need them, but we don't. I know, we're not gonna be talking about the larger, we're gonna be talking about the smaller one, and if it doesn't, and that's why it's worse.
Right, but now I.
Yeah, no, that's, but I'm just saying, I still think there's, I still think there's.
But.
We know they have thirty thousand already, and that's before the operating costs and the gas and the maintenance and the driver.
But we don't have to. But if we come up with like a memorandum of agreement with them, we can, if we have a signed memorandum of agreement, we can worry
We need to do that.
about drafting the actual contract with them afterward, wanting to sign, not like, no, 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 just saying, when. That's that, do my, my critical.
I I mean, honestly, we're contributing eighty thousand dollars from a C E C grant towards purchasing this vehicle, I think that we need eight thousand dollars worth of use or cash
I won't have to sit there, I won't have to sit there and speculate. I I'm totally agree. Yeah, I'm totally. I'm tired of this type of.
Exactly.
to make this work. And what will that take?
What you said.
Eighty thousand or eighty thousand?
Because that's what this costs.
But it was one sixty.
We get a fifty fifty K voucher or whatever it is.
Fifty eight thousand or fifty six?
Yeah, whatever, the fifty-seven six voucher, state voucher for three and great, fifty-seven, four, three.
And then we get the hundred.
Right.
So.
But I but I use the eighty thousand as an example.
So. So we're starting this, for lack of a better word, a negotiation, conversation with real hard numbers to figure out what we're going to do and and
I hear you.
Okay.
Yes.
at least as it stands, it seems that we're all in agreement, we're trying to get as many dollars as we can in return, maximize the environmental impact and shrink that van
Yes.
So.
to to sixteen from the unfortunately S A B for the twenty one.
Sixteen. Sixteen. And I have one last question, I have one last question.
And we're, we're studying, go a bigger distance, other box, goes bigger distance, other box.
But it does go longer too, yeah.
I I I have one last question for you, because I I think it plays into the negotiation with Summit Greenfield.
Right.
Compromises in the background.
They have an obligation of Monday through Friday, peak and lunch hour, okay, they have a Saturday morning service, the Saturday morning service, I feel really hinders town use.
Mm-hmm.
As part of the negotiation, I would like the town board to support alleviating Summit Greenfield from the Saturday morning in trade for payment.
Money.
Yeah.
Or at least give us the option, understand, we need to give us the option.
Well, but uh, wait a minute, I actually think Saturday morning
Yeah.
Maybe if our bidding is greater.
is really important if the goal is to really not ditch the hamlet with the farmer's market and the book fair and
Yeah, yeah. But I I would.
We can, we can.
But I would envision the town would take that responsibility over.
Yeah, she's not saying they don't use it, but.
I I'm not saying that we don't do it, I'm saying we alleviate Summit Greenfield's obligation for that.
She's saying, she's saying neither. You're both, you're both saying the same thing, it basically allows us to use on the weekend instead of having them use it back and forth for commuting, right?
No, we just do the grant, right, and it may be something like now in the weekends where there's no farmer's market, there's no, that we decide you wanna use it for something else instead of mandating it.
Yes.
Yeah.
As needed, right.
Right, but it gives us the ability to go to Millard, it gives us the ability to go to Genney on the weekends, it gives us much more flexibility.
Yeah.
Right. We're not saying they want to use it.
But you said their obligations only Saturday morning.
Sabrina, are you, are you just, Sabrina, are you certified to uh, C D L?
Correct.
I wonder, I mean, Saturday is a workday for a lot of people and for the people, I'm sorry.
Yeah, who's gonna help for it?
It's true.
You're the C D L.
Saturday is a workday.
Is Saturdays, I can't call, is part of the country.
But you know, it's, uh, I'll, I'll talk to some of the people in Austin with the large condo complexes to the run to the train stations.
I.
Exactly.
What is that?
I think.
And find out what the distribution of their usage is.
Our, maybe it's a niche, okay.
Yeah.
But Sabrina, all I would say is.
The driver, they have a schedule.
Need to know where you have.
As far as, as far as, honestly, I don't think we should talk to usage so much with them like now, I think, I think that's something down the road, maybe six months in, we could then revisit the usage.
They do those quicks. And so what the, the.
It might be eliminating Saturday, it might be eliminating some daytime, Monday through Friday trips, then we can come up, we come up with one number for one of it.
Yeah. I'm excited if initially we're gonna eliminate Saturday and they're gonna give us all Monday. So I'm just gonna interview the van owners.
I understand, but we don't know the usage really yet, that's the problem.
Well, it's always, Ed said we have that discretion, we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Right, exactly, I'm saying we don't do it now, we do it when we get there.
It's fine, let's get, let's see numbers and dollars.
No, the original commitment.
I mean, they already talked, they would be talking a few thousand, they would probably, for Saturday, so I'm not talking.
Was in the findings.
But the actual Saturday morning, which comes from.
That's a ragamuffin.
Probably have like.
Right.
I mean, if you take dollars. I mean, if you take dollars.
I'm what I'm.
Right, now I'm saying the affordable housing.
But we get the boxes anyway.
I'm just.
No, but planning board.
I'm just.
The stars, I thought the stars.
No, the planning board changed the start time by. The planning board changed the start time. It was originally, um, by CFO for the, um, ninety one townhomes. Because the town board changed the affordability component and added housing to.
Right, so when did they have to start?
By CFO of the Coopola building.
Well, that's gonna be an issue because it's gonna be before June.
They would run a temporary until we got the number that we have it.
All right, so, are we all right, Sabrina? We, we are, we're good?
It doesn't trust us.
Okay. Yeah. All right, all right, all right, you'll get back to soon what they say.
Alright, thanks.
At least you're wrapping this closely together. You're now as closely together as one may not be the van you want, so at least we know you're there.
And we're smiling, I'm a moron.
The guy from the assertive was really, he was really, he was.
I think it's gonna, it's gonna actually be better than the sixteen.
It's a good compromise.
It's all good, guys.
Compromise, and if you know where there's, so it'll be used for what?
About the compromise.
It's even better for greenhouse gas.
Check some more boxes.
All right, let's move to the next.
Okay.
Can we do?
Should we take a brief moment? Because Hollis just stepped out.
Well, can we just do like payment of claims and, and survive the Saturday weekend and just get out of here?
Want to see who guys are out there? What do you mean?
Uh, what's. This is a school presentation, we've been waiting for an hour and a half.
They're out there, what are they doing there?
Um, no, they're supposed to start at seven thirty, so thanks, but we're good.
That's probably bad aside at the point.
No, John, we're not ready for them. Thank you.
John's are starting at ours.
All of it's not here. Thanks.
All right, so.
Okay, the, um, payment claims. Any questions on it?
No.
Um, is, have any resolutions?
We also have to do Millwood sidewalk improvement project.
Yeah.
That's not the guys out there though.
No, 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 it's a single.
That's the sewer, they have.
No, 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 here.
Why so many? I think the ones that we.
I don't know. There are a lot of times.
How many gems?
One, but I have to.
Okay, all right, we got it.
Wait.
No, 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 no.
Just payment of claims.
Just one, just one claim, that's it?
Yeah, 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 one copy, it's good, no, no, we're good.
Yeah. I know, that's why I was wondering why.
Do we have one?
No, yeah, I say, I have one, I do.
Okay.
Sorry, I just kept passing them down.
Didn't change, did this? From what's here?
No, it didn't.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Should we do it or should we?
Yeah, can we have a motion?
All right, and move, uh, to approve payment of claims for the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand, sixty two dollars, two cents. Listen on the summary pre-check right away to court and detailed voucher detailed to court. All dated January twelfth of this year. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed this Wednesday, January seventeenth of this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, uh, the Millwood sidewalk improvement project, we all, we ended up with just a single response from the RFP for Right of Way Acquisition Services. So, just letting the board know, um, we sent out.
Why do we think we only got one back?
I don't know, but because it's, it's a relatively small job because it's just gonna be one. So I think that's why, but we actually got a decent price on it, so.
And we can compare that to a good price because.
Uh, because Bob, um, estimated that it was going to be more than that, uh, when he was doing his.
Analysis.
Analysis, um.
Possible to follow up, but that would find out why they didn't respond.
To. Yep.
Her water company, you mean?
Jill.
Follow up with her water company?
No, no, we didn't do that to.
Well, I think we just put it out on Vidnet.
Yeah.
No, we put it out on Vidnet and then we went.
So we all know who didn't respond.
What?
Because I got a public.
What we could, what we could do is also find out how many.
Yeah.
Oh, like the MLS of.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm looking over Jill's shoulder at, for people who did not submit.
Here. Yeah, they didn't submit. We went to them, we asked them whether or not they had just missed the deadline or they didn't intend to do it.
Oh, you did ask, okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, we pursued it with all of them.
Are those, are those people that download the application but never submitted it, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they downloaded it and we took and we sent out to additional ones as well.
Got it, got it. And they just didn't, it wasn't a large enough job for them or they?
Yeah, Terry actually. No, no, they just, they, they find, we thought maybe they was, you know, there was a snow day, we thought maybe they missed the deadline, there was a problem.
Yeah, right.
Just asked them did they intend to submit? They said no, we said, that's very much, and that's it.
But you didn't ask them why they didn't submit though.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so it'll be, it'll be off for next time, but I just wanted the board to know, okay?
You could ask them.
Know why people don't respond to this.
I, you know, you go for it, you you think that.
It's not a bad, it's not a bad idea, though, in the future, we could ask them, why didn't you submit? And maybe there's, maybe we learned something. It's like an exit interview.
Yeah, no.
All right, so what are we having now?
Sewer and, it's going to be, um, oops. Sewer and, oh, you want to just take a look at the administrative items? Is there anything anyone has a question on?
Wait for Hollis to go down.
Did she go to the bathroom or she go to the planning board to watch the table?
No.
No, no, she said.
No.
No.
She's at the mess room.
Smaller.
I thought you said I just wanna watch something. We should check it because we'll be sitting here, we'll let it wait.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, um, do you wanna do the, um.
We don't have to wait for four months.
Yeah, but she's important, she wants the, uh, that's very important.
I asked him.
Oh, I'm sure I'm now.
The maintenance district for the downtown hamlet.
Oh.
Sure.
This is actually just a preliminary discussion, but what I wanted to show the board is, is that we have a parking district that's currently um, in effect, we sort of outlined it for you.
Thank you.
No, you're on the desk.
So.
That's Hollis, yeah.
Yeah.
So it extends Bank of America parking lot, um, to the Citibank parking lot behind Allen Place.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it excludes Susan Lawrence parking lot, that's private, as is Rite Aid.
It's private, yeah.
And then you've got Seagull's parking lot in Comusian. And one of the things that we started talking about was now.
It was a Susan Lawrence parking lot.
Yeah, that's private, they don't, they don't park there, so.
It's not interesting.
And and by the way, if you're.
You can't park there because of going into their catering bay, so.
We use it.
Yeah.
It's a very valuable piece of property.
Very valuable, it's unbelievable.
Did you wanna say something, Rob?
Well, I was just gonna say that technically, if you look at the Susan Lawrence parking lot, it actually could connect to Lower King Street, but that's a whole nother story.
Yep. Yes, as Rite Aid and the whole bit, but yes, for a conversation for another day, but yeah, yeah, it's very interesting.
If you look out the window of, 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 uh, well, actually, there's a building next to, um, scattered books, there's a, there's a driver, they put it right back there.
Yeah, right. Yeah, very, yeah, um, anyhow, so little, little known track, because most people don't usually look at it from the sample. But anyhow, so one of the things that we were, um, going to do is, um, take a look at the costs that are presently assessed to the, this district. And this is our parking district. And one of the things that the parking district, um, pays for is for snow removal in the back parking lots, but also, as Eric will tell you, and it's been the, uh, topic of many of our heated conversations, is the clearing of the mounds of snow along the, um, the edge of the sidewalk. So when your property owners take and clear the snow, they don't put in the street, they tie it along the little edge there. And then the snow plows come and they take and they clear the street, and what you end up with is this mountain of imper, in, you know, penetrable ice and snow that nobody can take and navigate in order to get to the stores. And what we try to do, but are not really successful, is bring in crews late at night, um, usually a day or two after the snowfall. Um, we do them overnight, we bring in a great big backhoe, um, truck, and we get rid of the snow from downtown. Um, so when you think about the fact that snow clearing operations is something that we really already do downtown, um, it isn't that far of a stretch for us to.
Do the sidewalks.
Yeah, basically do the sidewalks on a regular basis.
I totally agree.
And so what we're gonna take a look at is, um.
Especially now that.
They have nice sidewalks and wanna make sure.
If the integrity of the sidewalk, the integrity of the sidewalk.
I I have to say, I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about somebody taking and telling a, a store owner that, oh, absolutely, we're using calcium chloride, it's pet friendly.
Right.
Yeah.
And next thing you know, you have two bags of rock salt that are all over the place.
That's the, right, doing this.
Well, that's what we really need to figure out is what is the current budget and how much would it really cost us? How much more would it cost us to do this? Um, and we'll come back with some numbers and see what we can really do.
Well, I think.
Because I think, at the end of the day, I think you're right, it's the integrity of the sidewalk.
Yeah, you have to look at it, and why I look at it as much as I, I don't wanna bear the cost. Citibank, American Express, they pay for security, they have people working internally, it doesn't make the money, it costs them money, but you have to maintain the integrity of that process, otherwise it's ruined. Not the exact same thing, but the same theme. If we don't protect it and do right by it, we're gonna destroy it. So you're investing this kind of money in the infrastructure?
Questions?
I don't want someone with a pick, 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 damaging it. Obviously, it comes down to dollars too, but if it's a reasonable amount.
Yeah, but we need to do something else.
It's not in that, it's assault.
Are there, but are there other things that we're gonna want to be able to maintain about the new streetscape besides just the, yeah, so.
Yes, we do.
Right, so with this coming.
Leeding and garbage and like.
Well, well, these are things that we already do that we are just gonna have to do better, um, going forward. We already have a hamlet caretaker who takes in orders, the plants, but you know, we need to be reading, we need to be, um.
You're gonna tell me something.
Right.
I really do have my CEO.
We have Santa Pro who comes and empties the trash, but you know, as the downtown becomes more and more popular, that trash removal is going to have to be daily and on weekends, it's gonna have to be multiple times.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
You, you just need to do it because, you know, the young down.
Especially in the summer.
Yep, I'm thinking of holes.
There's ice cream overflowing all.
All the scoops, outside, or.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yep, um.
And the fact is, you know, listen, we have Chapoqua Crossing coming, and the more we can do for downtown Chapoqua, the better. So it's not just a, it's not, I'm not, I'm not even talking about like streetscape, I'm talking about just helping out the merchants.
Yeah.
That we can help them out by taking one, make, you know, relieving this obligation from them. It helps us too, it's a win-win.
Well, let's find out numbers.
And and just, and and my understanding is, yeah, so we need the numbers and what it would mean to the various property owners that are affected by this.
Yep, that's what we can do. Mm-hmm.
Because the emails so far have been, have raised concerns about the impact on cost.
Yeah, I, I'm. Right, I'm not really, um, what, what I wanna, the costs I'm seeking to obtain are the costs of maintenance, not necessarily the cost to them. I wanna know what it's actually costing us, what do we spend, how much more it's, will it cost us, and can we cover it.
Welcome, a lot, a lot of the emails are, a lot of emails.
But and right now, we're generating revenue too, because, aren't we?
Well, but it's a wash because it's, we're not charging the district for the man hours to take and clear the.
Oh, okay.
So that, those are the numbers I'm seeking to, to nail down and figure out how much more it's actually going to cost.
A, a lot of the emails are basically like, we think it's a great idea, we just don't wanna pay for it.
Don't have to, and let's just say, yeah.
You guys could pay for it. And you know, there is, it's, it's.
You know what? We have staff, we have the machines, we have, we're already clearing the train station, we're already clearing in front of, um, the rec fields. We're already clearing in front of the, um, the community center. We're clearing on, you know, Upper King Street, that one twenty sidewalk. We're already clearing the one twenty sidewalk that goes to, to the road, first block.
Listen, they're going through a hard time, some of them are going through a hard time, some of them have their best Christmas ever, but, uh, they're going through a hard time right now, and then they're gonna have Chapoqua Crossing to compete with.
Yes.
Wait, so sorry, um, would this, if you were to do the sidewalks and the clearing, would it go onto Lower King too? Should it go off Lower King or only Jason to where the parking area is, right?
Yeah. No, Lower King, so we'd be here because this is lower where it is.
Well, no, sorry, yeah, sorry, so this, is this considered Middle King here?
Yes. Yeah, going.
I thought it was, I thought up to Jardine was still Lower King.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so this is Jardine right here.
Well, anyway, so. Yeah, but so would you be just?
No, I thought Lower King is more like, uh.
No, Lower King, no.
No, no, right, I'm sorry, so here, so here's Lower King.
That's more like at Starbucks than Lower King, really.
Yeah, right.
So here's Susan Lawrence, here's Lower King, Chapoqua Village Market, so.
The two ways.
Okay.
I like Jordan as such.
It was all of this, so it's all of this.
Starbucks.
Okay, but would it also be this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the, um, it would stop, um, like at the end of the historical society and at the end of residential.
So where would it stop?
Up, so not further up the, right?
No, and that's one of the things we need to talk about because we're not going that far with our sidewalk, because.
It's just gonna be with the sidewalk.
But let's, let me just take a look at some numbers and see what it's actually gonna cost.
Eric, what does this mean?
It just seems to go a little further up.
The purple's a new sidewalk, the purple's on this.
With the plateau, with the little boughs.
Purple's on the sidewalk, maybe.
You get more people to buy it. The district, you hit residential at some point, but.
Yeah, on that side, there is.
Church, there's other stores.
Right, so it doesn't go, it doesn't go as far as the church.
Right.
It doesn't go as far as, what is that, the yard?
Castle.
The yard.
The yard, just not go that far.
Yeah.
They're actually not in the parking district. So those tenants do not have the right to park in merchant parking. They don't pay anything.
Eric, what does this mean?
Yeah, um, I hadn't mentioned it, but indirectly I pay another five hundred a year for garbage collection out of the parking district. I've replaced twice the sidewalk in front of my building, uh, when we did a cooperative thing, uh, by the merchants, without town effect at that particular point. Um, so that something would be being transferred back if you're gonna enter and do something that we've done voluntarily. Um, although technically the law says we are responsible, but we've chosen twice. And the other question, basically, is we still have a question of whether I'm subject to county or town regulation. I think you've gotta negotiate that with the cleanup, who's, who's legal.
Yes.
And the last item is the question of the utilities. Um, they dig it up, they slow them, throw in blacktop, very poor jobs. They come back in a dilatory manner, and they throw any sort of colored combination, uh, in on the thing so that there's clearly no match or no attempt to continue the, uh, particularly with the upgrades that you're talking about, to continue with that type of thing. So I think you've gotta talk to Con Ed and you've gotta talk to Verizon and, uh,
Yeah.
uh, also indirectly DPW as to what's gonna be done about these repairs because they have never been done
Well.
in a halfway decent fa, manner for the last forty years.
We, we have talked from time to time about, um, other communities who have acquired street opening permit fees from Con Ed. Um, and, and it's conversations that, that we, we have from, that we've had from time to time. We have resisted doing it because we, 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 we need a working partnership with, with Con Ed and especially in light of a project of this size, um, the one that we're gonna miss the right now. So, um, once the smoke clears from this, um, we will have conversations again.
Well, I'm simply saying is historically, the utilities have never done a good job of attempting to either repair it at the, at the time of the temporary work
No, no, I didn't, I didn't.
or even when they come back, of in any way, shape or form, attempting to match what was already there. So you have a continuous hodgepodge throughout the parking district. And that's been in existence ever since the parking district was created. And if you're gonna spend the kind of money you're talking about that we're putting into this investment project, you know, it makes no sense to spend that kind of money and then go back to the old system.
Well, we're, we are hopeful that now that we are replacing the infrastructure, that it's going to be a little while before they need to rip it up and repair it again. Please don't laugh, don't laugh, please. It's the only thing that helps me sleep at night is knowing that once they leave, they're not coming back.
Until next time.
First, first time they get a gas leak, they'll be back tearing it up again, you know.
Were you down at Lower King today? Were you down at Lower King today? Never mind.
No, I was, yeah, I was down there, you know. But I was also down there the last time they ripped the main out and stuff like that. I mean, you know, I've been down there on a couple of occasions. Um, but it's also a case, you know, maybe with this new type of, of conduit that they've used, they may reduce it, but there's been a continuous, um, uh, leaks on a regular basis on the old system. I don't know whether, I, I'm hopefully this new authorized type.
Right. It's, that's age and, and I'm hoping that now that they've, you know, put something in brand new and it's pressure tri, tested and all of the conduits are pressure tested, that, you know, we're, hopefully we've turned a corner on it.
And they know where it is. That helps too, right? Because they go, oh, you wanna know, you're, you're in the right spot.
Hopefully.
Thank you, thanks, Eric.
All right, feasibility report.
All right.
And I will move, I'm gonna grab another cup of tea, I hope. Your presentation.
Do you wanna add something?
No, good, thank you. Having tea, good?
It's actually yours.
No, it's mine, oh, it's mine.
No, it's just a guess.
This is bad, I'm gonna keep myself awake with this.
Do we have an update on Random Farms or River Woods?
Not much, it's not been. The attorney for D E P has been.
God, I wish that was in town.
Do you guys need anything, drink, anything?
No.
Did you see them?
Hey, how you doing?
Nice to see you again, how are you?
Good, thanks. All right.
Last time I saw you, we were marching on the field, uh.
Yeah, football field. What'd you guys do with that again? You did the, uh, you're the engineer?
We did the design for the field, sorry, yeah.
Design, all right. For the turf field, yeah, let's go. All right, I think we're all, uh, Jill's not here, we can start, oh, there's Jill.
Ooh, busted, all right, let's start.
All right, so I'm gonna, um, just kinda give you a summary, uh, to my right, uh, are, uh, members of Woodard and Kern, Anthony and Ken, um, who've been working with us for several months now, on the feasibility analysis for searing Millwood. And this was, um, an effort that is written into the comprehensive plan, it's something that, um, we looked at eventually examining, just to kinda set the stage, uh, for years now, there have been design standards for Millwood, um, for when properties turn over, or a property owner wants to do something with their property, design standards that were written, um, for a future of Millwood that is not necessarily attainable, given the lack of sewers or the inability to improve, land area to improve septic systems. So, one of the things, um, that has been talked about has been searing Millwood, and we decided to do a feasibility analysis regarding the actual layout of the engineering of the system, as well as the cost of searing. Um, and they're gonna go through the analysis, we're gonna talk about a couple of things, and talk about things, what this means for the town in the sense of a future direction for Millwood.
Yeah, I, I think Sabrina has the introductions well covered, but again, so you know who's speaking, uh, with you this evening, my name is Anthony Catalano, I'm the senior principal with Woodard and Kern, and, um, and Ken Kohlbrunner is, uh, is our project manager, who's been, uh, primarily leading the efforts for this study, so I think it's a good opportunity for you all to, as Sabrina said, listen in on, uh, the work that we've completed, there's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of collaboration, uh, together with the town, which has been very helpful, Sabrina and the rest of the team, um, and it's an opportunity for you to ask questions, which is the best part, right? So, um, so I'll, Ken, go through the details, uh, in the presentation here, and then, um, we're, we're available to, uh, to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, and thank you, you very much for, for having us, uh, I've been looking forward to getting to this point, presenting, uh, where we are, and, uh, and seeing where we go from here, so I think we've covered a little bit of background and, and what we'll be talking about, so, uh, jump right into it. So, just to, we kinda covered the, uh, the background, that the concern is, um, really related to the, the constraints, um, in Millwood related to the lack of sewers, and, uh, the existing septic systems not allowing, um, for the diversity of land use that's required, um, to meet the, uh, the comprehensive plan, and specifically around the, the commercial and industrial parcels, and so we can take a look at, um, so this is the, uh, the study area, um, that we looked at, um, this was what, in the, uh, identified in the RFP, and so we've got, um, you know, kind of the, the two, you know, commercial areas, we've got constraints, um, kind of the undevelopable parcels of the, uh, Con Ed utility easement, uh, there's DEP, you know, wetland properties, and so it's really the, the area, kinda down near, uh, De Chico, um, that we're looking at, and then, as we head up, uh, Station Road and, and Schuman Road, um, toward the east there, and, uh, we also identified, you can see that the yellow line is the, uh, the Croton watershed. So there's a portion of, uh, the study area that is within the watershed, um, which will have some significance in terms of ability to, um, help push for, uh, the use of sewers to, for septic avoidance, um, is a, a concern for DEP, but also, you know, some limitations and, you know, how, or some of the restrictions and requirements that DEP has for development within the watershed. And I should point out as well, um, let's see if this shows up on there, Pheasant Run, um, is just outside the, uh, the study area, an existing, uh, condo development, so while not, um, originally included in the study area, it's something that we did look at, and went into a little bit more detail in the report, um, as, uh, because as we looked into it, determined that it does, while it's on septic right now, it was originally contemplated to connect to a future sewer system, uh, should one, be developed in the future, and so there would be, you know, a change for how their, um, are pumping their effluent, but it would be a relatively easy connection. So, from there, we jumped into technically what works for sewers, uh, within Millwood, and so focused first on the study area, and, and laid out a conceptual plan for gravity sewer within the study area, and so we're, we're seeing, generally, we're able to get everything to flow, you know, down toward, you know, the low point here, you know, the gas station. Um, and so that's laid out as, uh, eight inch diameter gravity sewer, uh, which is typical for this size development, provides more than enough capacity for both the current use, as well as, uh, expansion for future uses. I just, uh, should note that obviously this is a conceptual layout at this point, it's based on, you know, uh, high level county GIS contours, if, if there, you know, the design were to proceed, there'd need to be obviously additional investigation in terms of, you know, geotechnical borings, you know, su- survey for separation to utilities, um, things like that, but took a look at it, the, the layout, the depths, are consistent with, with what we would typically see for gravity sewer, you know, in that, you know, eight, you know, maybe ten foot, you know, deep in certain sections, um, so technically feasible, the challenge is, um, getting from that point down to the connection to the county trunk sewer. And so this is where we zoom out a bit more, um, and we can start to see Millwood in relation to Austining and, and Mount Pleasant, and the long run required down Route one hundred to get to the existing county trunk sewer, um, at Chaplain Road. And as part of the initial scope, uh, we did look at, um, connection to town sewer in Austining, which does discharge to the same point, you know, so might shorten up the run down Route one hundred, then onto North State Road, and a connection there, but still a significant, uh, length of run in the state right of way and a significant cost.
But significantly shorter, is it not?
It's about half the distance.
So what, what makes this a better decision?
Well, so this is, so regardless, we have to get to, uh, that point either way, and there are issues with, there's an existing pump station there, it's not direct by gravity, um, to that point, so there have to be upgrades to that pump station and potentially Forest Main as well, so the, the pump station.
I guess, I guess the, so the bottom line is the cost, even if it's, even though it's shorter, it's gonna be greater.
Correct.
So you have those numbers, though?
Yeah, and so that's what, um.
And, and the other question I have is, just looking at this, there's a, the North County Trailway, yes, you do hit Route one hundred, on the, um, south side of the Teconic Overpass. Um, but if you go south of that, there is a spur that's not on the highway, it's just to the left of the highway, so you could be basically in the old railroad track bed.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than doing construction on the highway, and I don't know whether that in your calculations would have a cost impact.
At this point, it may have some, it probably wouldn't have a, uh, significant cost system, 'cause we're, or, um, 'cause we're using, you know, still planning level, high level numbers, you know, again, taking into account, you know, crossing utilities, there's multiple, storm, you know, culvert crossings that would have to be dealt with regardless, stream crossings, wetlands, things like that, that would factor in. So, from there, and I, I guess I should point out, um, just so everyone's aware, as I'm sure you are knowing that the background of this, this, you know, the connection to, the county trunks who are there, uh, ultimately discharges to Yonkers Wastewater Treatment Plant, um, so that connection would require, you know, county approval for the additional flow, there was also some brief discussion of, you know, is there a possibility if we're going, you know, we're looking at Austining, up and over to Peak Skill, again, carries with it, you know, some similar restrictions in terms of having, you know, long runs for Forest Main, potentially having to upsize existing sewers.
Where's the Peak Skill connection?
So.
On North, on Pine's Bridge?
Hmm, no.
No, it's, it's away, yeah.
No, it's further, yeah, it's further south.
Wow.
So, the, as we then dug into it and sort of developed the preliminary costs, for just Millwood local sewers, so kinda that first sewer layout, just the gravity sewer, the blue, yep.
The blue.
Um, we're looking at a cost of seven point nine million dollars, um, so that's, we had, uh, we had laid that out in the, uh, the report, we also are carrying, um, a cost for, that, that includes, so the pipe, excavation, pavement, uh, as well as soft costs, engineering, administration, legal, um, also doesn't include allowance for, connection to, uh, a separate sewer system if needed, and so that's where, then we looked into the connection all the way down, Route one hundred, fourteen point one million, um, starts to become infeasible when you're looking at the s- the size of Millwood, the number of parcels in there, um.
Does the fourteen point one include the seven point nine?
It does.
Okay. And this is assuming, but the seven, this is, if Random Farms does go down the county trunk, we would be spending the seven point nine.
This is. Closer to seven point nine than fourteen point one.
Correct, and so that's, that's how then.
And so that's, I mean, just do the math, that's six point three million dollars, six point two million dollars difference. I won't ask now, 'cause I'll ask you later, but I'm gonna put this question in your head, which is, some of the numbers that I've seen for the Random Farms expenses from Dolph.
What's this?
These, some of the numbers that we have seen from Dolph, which projected out the costs to connect from all the way from Random Farms, all the way down to the county, which has been, uh, in essence, approved, um, don't reflect the similar costs that you have here for a much shorter portion, so I think that, at some point, I'd like to see some review of Dolph's numbers, uh, and his engineering drawings, I don't know if they were shared with you?
Well, so that's what I was about, thank you for leading me to that.
Oh, good.
This wasn't set up, though.
Yeah. Come on, man.
I swear.
No, no, I, I was waiting, okay, you're up there, bated breath.
Okay, yeah, so, so. So with that, um, knowing that the diversion project is currently underway, um, we said, okay, let's focus on the local sewers within Millwood itself, assuming we would have some ability to connect to the diversion project, understanding that that's still, um, that design is underway, there would still be coordination required to make that happen, there'd be coordinated negotiation around the connection fees, um, and some potential cost savings as well, if we were to be, to coordinate in advance of those projects moving together independently, if we can get them synced up to a certain degree.
There's a synergy there, working together.
There's some synergy, and so what we did do, um, is we did get the, the plans, um, for the diversion project, and looked, conceptually at a connection, and based on the plans that we saw, there is laid out a pump station near that, uh, low point at the end of Millwood that could, uh, conceivably be a connection point, but we would want to do additional, uh, design and coordination around that to make sure, um, that we're fully integrated, in terms of, you know, that's starting to get into the details of, at what elevation are they proposing to come into their pump station, do we need to adjust that, do we need to change the size of the, the pumps or the wet well, so.
Kind of the next step in the planning phase, right, so conceptually, it makes sense technically, but to drill more into the details of what they're proposing, and are there upgrades that are required for us to do what we wanna do with their project, it's kinda part of what we're gonna discuss after, is the next steps in the process.
So, with that, we moved ahead with, uh, looking at the, the financials of, you know, what the project, uh, would cost based on the local sewer option only, and so with that, we did, you know, kind of, we, we broke them out into, to three separate approaches just to kinda work through, um, how we got to the end point, uh, and so, first approach, just a basic straightforward, you know, what if we divided that cost across the fifty individual parcels, um, within the study area, and you can see a hundred fifty thousand per property.
But actually, to tell you, that's under current zoning use, people would pay that in a heartbeat, they would.
Well, it gets better, though, this is a better person.
Oh, okay, gets more expensive?
No, it's better, we were trying to get it, and it's, yeah, so.
No, no, okay, no, no, it's not, actually, people, people would pay that in a heartbeat, they wouldn't even blink.
So that's a good thing to hear, there is.
Okay. Well, and I think, I think there are certain properties that might, I think when you start, there are some residential, you know, when you start to get to those, that, that's a big, a big number.
Well, yeah.
That's a lot of money for me.
But what you probably do is you probably distribute that cost not on a, on an average basis, but on an opportunity basis.
Well, so then what we did is, is we, you know, uh, brought in the equivalent dwelling unit, uh, concept, or EDU, and so this is an approach that tries to pull in, uh, a flow basis, um, so starts to allocate the cost based on the flow that you're using, it's tied to, it's actually, um, used by a lot of agencies for funding and approvals, they wanna see this, um, calculation, so it's the single family residential flow, and so for Millwood, bas- you know, we had the flow data, and looked at, you know, what do the, the single family, uh, properties use, it's an average of about two hundred gallons per day, and so when you take that into the total study, current study, uh, area flow, sixteen thousand gallons per day, you get eighty four EDUs, so eighty four.
Oh, so you took the existing flow.
Equivalent dwelling units. Right, and so that's seven point nine million into the eighty four, you're down to ninety four thousand EDU, so that would be a single family residential properties, one EDU would be responsible for ninety four thousand, a supermarket that has more flow would have more EDUs, would be responsible for a higher cost, but still at ninety four thousand, we're probably still a bit high for where we wanna be. So, that's then, when you start, you can start to use EDUs to then set you, set you up for, um, future development or, or future land use. And so, um, if we set the EDU cost at thirty five thousand dollars, so that's what a, that's again, a single family residential property would use, and that, you know, can vary base, you know, as the sewer district is formed, there's some, you know,
Flexibility.
Flexibility and, and negotiating that, and, and setting that up to make the project affordable, but that's typical for, you know, projects of, of this type and size, um, 'cause when you start to look at, again, you know, for an individual property, a septic system, yeah, if it's a simple repair, it's less than that, but if you're redoing your whole fields, if you're starting to look at advanced, you know, treatment, can very quickly start to get toward that range.
So this would be approved, this, this number would be approved for a sewer district?
Correct.
Yes, this is the average of what is seen in projects like this, this is the acceptable number.
So kinda working backwards to them.
And again, some, you know, leeway to, right, and so with that, then, you end up with two hundred twenty five EDUs
So you work backwards.
within the study area, based on a project cost of seven point nine million, so again, we have the eighty four existing EDUs, so that balance, hundred forty one EDUs, is then available for future use, so if someone then, you know, wants to, you know, build, you know, add a, a higher use, you know, to their property that has more flow, would then be responsible for paying off.
And, and that, that.
So where does that money sit in, yeah?
Yeah, where does it?
That becomes the, the trick, so that's then the town, or, you know, depending how the project is financed, but if the town is, you know, let's say, laying out the money to build the project, they are then floating that balance until such time as.
It's paid upfront, basically.
Right.
So a little bit more than a third.
That time may never come.
Right, right, so with the town, we sit down roughly two thirds of that roughly eight million dollars.
Right.
For a potentially long time.
Well, no, actually, if what we end up doing, and this, this is something we can have a conversation about, but the, most of the business owners who account for the vast majority of the property, it's not single family, Henry Place is tiny, but most of it is just commercially used as it stands today. Schuman Road has a couple of little houses that come and go off the market, but it's really nothing. That, the land that's actually there right now is used to store, uh, you know, scaffolding. Or, it's used to store trucks, it's used to store, store lawnmower equipment, I mean, I don't know how many acres ultimately, but this area that's actually. this area that's actually developable is, it's quite a lot of land, I mean, it's, it's big, so that if you were to do, you can actually come up, and the other big thing that's not in here, maybe, since you've obviously thought of everything, like, if you added Pheasant Run to this, cause there's, what, sixty units in Pheasant Run or something?
Eighty-four.
Is it that big? It's big.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was that big.
And, and so there, you're looking at, you know, but, I mean, maybe not quite, cause it's, you know, probably how it's negotiated, how they're connected, but almost, yeah, one-to-one EDU to, to units there.
Wow, I didn't even know it was that big, alright, so anyways, there's ways that this can come down, and I've also heard of situations where what you do is under, I mean, I'll get my words wrong, so I don't wanna misuse them, but there are people who actually sort of take in areas and want them to develop, and what they do is they rezone the areas, but if the developer comes in and wants to build it, they actually pay upfront cash into the sewer district as part of the negotiation, part of the deal for coming in and getting the higher values.
So that's part of, when we're saying the next steps, that's another point that we were going, here you go, that we're going to cover in terms of-
We're there.
Looking at it from a, you know, an economic development standpoint and evaluating it more closely, taking into consideration some of the things that you're saying, and, uh, uh, that's part of what the next step is to include.
Right, so, so kind of a, a combination of, you know, outreach discussion with those property owners to say, you know, start to have a conversation, what, you know, do you see as, you know, feasible, and, you know, for the, the financials of the project, but then also some, you know, further investigation into the, the form and density of potential zoning and land use changes that would be needed to support, you know, that type of development.
The balance of the EDUs.
Again, within, you know, keeping within the, the character that the community is looking to maintain.
Yeah, this, so, so the, the, the next steps, are they, like, when you say, Hala, you, you can identify a whole strip on Schulman Road that is currently being, uh, what we call underutilized. So the question is, is what compilation of zoning changes and form of future development would be appropriate to compensate for those additional EDUs?
Sorry, I got distracted.
It's okay. Um, so, so that's really where, kind of, one of the, the major next steps, cause one of the concerns in, in all of the hamlets, when we talk about changes in land use and additional development, is the form and character of that future development. And, you know, we know that, um, if we have assistance from another pipeline going in, we can feasibly and realistically, if the town is willing to make the zoning changes and front the capital costs of the sewers, we can look at zoning changes and the form of that zoning and do a combination of zoning, of form-based zoning and traditional zoning. After speaking with property owners, and as you know and I know, there are many property owners who would love to see sewers in Millwood and take advantage of that, but there's a real possibility that we could change Millwood and put sewers in.
Yeah, I know for, uh, you know, I've talked to some of the other guys who own a restaurant, and what they have is they've got a septic tank that has to get pumped. And, you know, you talk about, and he talks about how expensive that is, you know, all the time, and for him-
And that's a perfect, right, that just goes on and-
For forever, and, um, there's places that, you know, people have ideas of what they wanna do, whether the idea is to be acceptable to the residents is a separate issue, but they have ideas of what they wanna do, and the lack of sewers just doesn't do it, so.
So that's why the, yeah, that's a pretty dimension, really, that next step is, you know, to, you know, have those further conversations.
Yeah.
Do you have- Have you worked with towns where they are doing economic development and they set up structures where people basically contribute to infrastructure as part of getting project approvals? They're sort of like, you create a district, that's the infrastructure improvement district, and that they need to contribute, should they wanna develop?
Yep. Yeah, so that's where it is in discussion with them, there's a lot of flexibility in how the district is set up, how the costs are shared, how some of this is funded. Um, and so, I can't, I'd have to see, you know, if we've done that specifically, um, on any projects, but I do know informing just, you know, districts, yeah, you have that option, you know, upfront to say, yeah, here's how, you know, we wanna do it differently, so there's-
It's in establishing the district.
More capital upfront, so there's less, you know, ongoing O M or vice versa, yeah.
Well, if less going costs, I see.
It's the financial piece that, you know, we talked about the engineering tonight, but there is that financial analysis aspect of it, which is also part of the next step. And, uh, we have a group that focuses specifically on looking at what the different options are that we would lay out so that the town can consider that, um, as part of the cost sharing and, you know, it would make sense to just say, hey, this is how it's done, this is one way, there are many different ways to, to address it, and, uh, we'd be happy to share that with you at some point, or even just maybe just give you a list of, you know, some different scenarios that we've done, um, when we get to the next, next stage.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good, because I know also you guys actually build, set up, build, finance sewer districts, and then you charge the operating, you know, you basically pass that on and for a long-term ability to, as a business.
As a business, yeah, we have, we didn't get into who we are, but we have, uh, our organization, um, has the consulting end of our business at a thousand people. There's about, um, seven hundred or so on the consulting end, the consulting end of our business, and then the two hundred or two hundred plus are on the contract operation side. So we, we operate more than fifty-five plants across the United States, what it in current does. Uh, and so we're, we're very familiar with the different financing scenarios, and we actually, depending on where it is, geographically in New York, you, you can't really do design-build, but, uh, in other states where you can, we'll take it right through design, build, operate, uh, finance, you know, through the whole process, um, when, when the regulations allow us to, so.
New York doesn't allow that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So, the, so, so the, the kind of the next, and again, this is all predicated on having a pipeline already there.
Right.
Uh, you know, that, that's first and foremost, but, you know, the three bullets that are up there kind of give a sense of the different things that need to be done. Financing is part of that, Hala, but again, you know, the outreach needs to occur, we need to look at what that future development would mean for the character and the form of Millwood, and talk with the property owners, and then further design the system and understand the financing.
Yeah, I, yeah, cause I would actually put financing, because I, it's sort of like in there, because I think any conversation with the property owners, regardless of all the pie in the sky stuff, is gonna come down to money.
That's what it's gonna cost.
And so I think even if we don't have the exact numbers, but sort of like different methods of financing would-
So i- i- if, if I can point out for you, one of the things, and I don't know, Ken, if you have any more slides, but in the report, in, in the report, there's a table of EDUs that are equivalent to specific uses. So a restaurant is typically X, an apartment building is typically X number of EDUs.
Right.
And as you can see through his, through the slide where they identify, there are eighty-four right now, with Pheasant Run at another eighty-four, there's, you know, the balance is a hundred and forty-one. You can start to really see where the biggest EDU benefit is from different uses, and then align that with the goals of the comprehensive plan, when, you know, in specific, when we talk about housing type, housing income, when we look at, um, restaurants and service uses, those are the things that really, you start to really grasp at, how many EDUs are each of those worth, and then you start matching them up with properties, and, you know, your biggest challenge is then become parking in stormwater.
Okay, can I ask a really, go back to the EDU thing, right?
Parking deck.
The, we have the EDUs here, we have an existing EDU flow, and then you have the thirty-five thousand dollars per parcel calculation that came up as the standard for the state, however it is.
As, as a starting point, yeah.
As a starting point. The number of EDUs to achieve financial viability at thirty-five thousand is what number again?
Twenty, it was eighty-four plus one forty-nine?
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Two fourteen, wasn't it two fourteen?
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Can you back up to that?
Two hundred and twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
So we have eighty-four, so a hundred and forty-one is the delta, and then if Pheasant Run was included, you said that was eighty-two?
I believe that's eighty-four, yeah.
Eighty-four units.
But it's just sixty EDUs, and-
So then as you-
A restaurant, I see-
But the price would go up.
Right, so-
Seven point nine would go up.
And so-
No.
And then all Pheasant Run?
No.
Not significantly, because they, they had their infrastructure, and we would have a manhole, it would run outside.
Oh, because they, they already set it up that way, got it.
Yeah, they're connecting it to what we know.
Got it, got it, it would be a big benefit to them.
Yeah, they're connecting it to what we know.
Got it.
But I mean-
Or work, they're connecting into what was already built.
Right, got it.
But when you say next steps, I mean, I, I know you mentioned this already, the, the first step is getting the pipe in the ground. I mean, nothing, none of this can happen without getting that pipe in the ground.
Right.
We can't take the next steps, really, until we, I mean, we could take the next steps, but you gotta get that pipe in the ground.
You can take-
Well, uh, I, I think we recognize as much, we're, we're probably calculating cost and payment.
Yeah, and, and part of that is, becomes around how the district is formed, and then ultimately a referendum to create that district.
Yes, I, I-
And so that, getting the pipe in the ground can't happen until-
I can assure you, that referendum would pass.
Yeah, but I, I don't-
No, but we're talking about the, we get the Random Farms diversion project.
Well, that's the key thing, which I just don't, I mean, yeah, just don't, I just don't wanna derail that.
You're making great progress.
I don't wanna derail it, do you have any?
They are, and, and that's part of the cha- uh, I see challenge, but coordinating what we're doing with the timing of that project, right?
We're still sitting-
Right, and, and just-
That's not making derail, that's, that's making, that's making great progress.
We're still stood, we're still sitting on the town, as a town, we're still sitting on sixty units, right?
It, it is, and we're-
Even if we included Pheasant Run.
At sixty units, sixty units is basically-
Times thirty-five grand per-
Well, sixty units is-
Times thirty-five grand.
These guys finance it.
Yeah, these guys can finance it.
So, so can you go back to that watershed for a minute?
And then they pay in taxes.
So, so I wa- I wanna point something out here.
The unused units?
Yeah, they sell them, that's the side business of those.
So right now, right now, um, DEP, working with Random Farms and Riverwoods, are in the process of developing term sheets. The term sheet previously regarding Millwood, because if you recall, uh, five years ago, when we were negotiating the first term sheets, and we said, well, we want allowances in Millwood, DEP said, why? Your comprehensive plan says no sewers, stay as it is forevermore, um, there's nothing that gives us any indication that there's any interest in sewer-ing Millwood. Flash forward five years, we've redone our comprehensive plan, we've talked about this, we've talked about sewer-ing Millwood, we've undertaken a study, we've gone that next step, we are identifying next steps to take even further, we know the reality of what that sewer line would mean, and most importantly, look at where that watershed line is in Millwood. Now, mind you, the midsection of Millwood is Con Edison, we can't develop that land, but right now, we are at a pivotal point in working with DEP to make sure we get allowances to improve land uses in the area in the watershed in Millwood that DEP considers their own, and so that's the point we're at right now, is we need to make sure we preserve our right as a community, and that we protect a connection, a public connection for Millwood for public good, so we're not paying astronomical connection fees. So those are the two objectives that we need to try and work into DEP's agreements right now.
Okay, great, well, I would love to get an, maybe we can meet, um, the three of us, because I'd like to get a little closer to this, since this is some information that, you know, I'm, it's great that it, this is a positive step, and I'm happy. Um, and that property that's within the DEP watershed, that area along Millwood Road from Henry Place up to the old fire station, is a pretty nice piece of chunk of property. Let's, and is there, now let me go back to this, so let's talk about the DEP and the watershed. From the old firehouse on Schulman.
There's a road called Henry Place?
Yes, you see that little spur that goes north? That's Henry Place.
Oh.
Um.
Is it a railroad?
It's, it's a, it's a dirt road, but it's got like eight houses on it, and I think they would like to be turned into apartment buildings, or they'd like to be rezoned, um. Just in terms of where that line is, and that is like quite a pe- that's, I mean, the best property is a big piece of property, um, and the firehouse, and even some of the little stores along that, like, little spur.
Yep.
Um, that's in the watershed, is there alternate funding sources for watershed properties? So for example, like, are there certain types of grants that apply to watershed properties versus? Like, I would think there would be.
So, so when it comes to New York City watershed, um, DEP kind of controls all of that.
We've learned that.
Yes, um, when it comes to funding, they are not keen on funding development in their watershed. They've worked very hard to try and control development in the watershed. Um, we have been able in the past to rely on Westchester County's mandate for affordable housing and the things that the county was dealing with, and, and obtaining allowances for future development associated with affordable housing. We now have a comprehensive plan that has the right goals written into it to give support to protecting our development rights in Millwood. We just need DEP to understand that and to incorporate it into their term sheets.
Well, I would-
So as far as funding, there's low-interest loans available, EFC does a lot of funding, we've tried to go after all sources of funding for the diversion project.
Well, we're better now, because if we have like a real district, we'll actually be procured from it.
Right, right, um, you know, so, so there is possibility, at this point, it is too soon to even-
Well, I would like to know what the requirements would be, because, um, I can assure you that in terms of water quality coming off some of these properties, and the activities that are actually taking place on those properties, there is no doubt in my mind that some sort of development will upgrade
So-
what's coming, what's currently being done on those properties and what's going into the watershed.
So, Hala, I, I think you speak very truthfully about that, and I do not disagree with you. Unfortunately, from a practical standpoint of working with DEP, they don't necessarily share that view.
Maybe, maybe not, see, but I, I do think that there is an opportunity to actually upgrade quality, cause this, you know what it is, it's-
So Sabrina, does it help to get, to gauge the interest in some of these, uh, property owners for purposes of the term sheet?
Not for the purposes of the term sheet, I think, I think we need to make sure our interests are protected in the term sheet, and I will be forwarding you some language, um, that I have been advised to provide to DEP council and, um, management staff who are working on the term sheet, um, and I will share that with you, because, um, we need to send some information sooner rather than later.
Are you gonna share the term sheet as it stands now and give written update?
There is no written term sheet as it stands right now, and unfortunately, until such time as there is a draft, we will be party to the term sheet, they will not release anything, they're in the process of drafting it now, and DEP legal is drafting it, working with Kevin Young, who is representing both municipalities, both community groups.
Nobody left this room. Just now, you mean, when that whole, nobody left this room, you had anyone left the room?
No, I did.
No, Ed, Ed might have went down, but he's not a town board member, oh, Joe also, no town board members went.
That's why I tried to find without-
Ed and I. No.
Um, what was I gonna ask you, the term sheet, uh, we're not working on it, is it Kevin Young or is it?
Yeah.
It's Kevin Young.
Right, it's not us technically working.
No, we're not part of it.
No, we are not, we are not working, we, I have been asked for the town to provide a statement, which I have a draft of for the town board's review. I will share it with you, and we can discuss it.
Right, but it's not us, it's one of the-
It's not us, we are not negotiating. Can we, can we, can we add that to an executive session before we, um, I mean, just adopt it? It's not, it's not executive session. If it's a term sheet, wouldn't it be? No, because we're not part of it.
It's not ours.
It's not ours. I know, I, I have tried to have this conversation, we can talk, how about that?
We'll get an update, Sabrina will give us updates. Okay, what's next?
I'll, I'll send you information.
Oh, good information.
That's what we have, all right, yeah.
Well, this is pretty fabulous.
That is very helpful.
Okay, good.
Can we get that, uh, the present, can we get a copy of the presentation?
Yeah, I've got a hard copy.
I know it's in here, but maybe like an electronic.
We'll try to, be the answer.
So we can post it online.
Should I send it?
Yeah.
That's fine.
So Sabrina, and we should probably get extra hard copies for the Millwood West End Advisory Board? We can, okay, bye, or you're gonna give me these?
We, we have.
I hope we got copies to go share.
No, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, my hard copy.
Of this, of the slide?
I guess you probably can.
Thank you, thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Wait, Hala, we'll print all the ones here.
And we're going to post them online.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's very hard to read some of this stuff with an app online.
It just doesn't.
Well, we'll keep, we need to keep this a couple for ourselves.
I'll take your extra copies.
We need at least, Jill, you have one over there?
Yeah, I have one with that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is it stung yet?
Thank you guys.
No, no, no problem.
Okay, you guys did a great job. By the way, Barry, if you wrote the report, you did a really nice job.
And she doesn't say that that often. You should be honored.
You might be the first.
It's got a lot of numbers, it's got charts, it's got.
Thank you, Trixie.
That's a trick. Leave now.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, you're locked down. Great.
Any good with the card? No problem, Jerry.
So what you missed was, Hala wanted to know.
Six, seven, six, seven. Whole foot tall, I think.
Is that a surface?
It is.
Only talking off one.
That's a new one?
Yeah, it doesn't have any ports.
Got it.
I just think everybody should know.
Works a good.
I know, it's a new one.
And it's, you know, it's just got swamped, it's connected to a project.
So I also just.
Even if it's.
I have mine.
The one two, I think it's lower.
She's been one on the board.
I'll be like two thousand fifteen, thirteen.
Oh, good night, Sabrina.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, good seeing you. All right, anything else?
This is so feasible, this is so exciting. Surface pro.
Great, so I think we're good. Anything else?
Yeah, but it was a conversation. I mean, who has a conversation?
Yeah, I went through the administrative items. Any questions on the administrative items?
Yeah, but you, but there are residents.
There's no residents. Just asking, were there any questions on the administrative items?
And also like with others.
I think I made.
Okay, so, okay, so we're good to go? We will see everybody?
Oh, move towards her.
We have to make a motion to pay bills.
We did that.
Oh, you were out.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Who seconded?
I said all in favor.
I seconded.
I said all in favor.